So yeah, I forgot to watch.
I must get this battery really quick.
Okay. Okay, June agenda.
All right, perfect.
See if this one will work.
Are we just at four?
Yeah, we are at four.
Just four.
We are right now.
You're ready?
Okay, calling to order the June 18th mission of the Historic Resources Commission, meeting of the Historic Resources Commission here in 141 North Front Street in the conference room. That's a deviation from our previous location here at 4:04 PM. The next business meeting of the commission will be Thursday, July 2nd, 2025, at noon, 111 North Front Street, Room 205. And our next hearing of the commission will be Thursday, July 17th, 2025, at 4:00 PM, back next door in Room 205, 111 North Front Street on the second floor. Jaclyn, can I raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do, Jaclyn Mizell.
Wonderful, and starting with introduction of commissioners here present this evening, starting on my very far right.
Michael Forrester.
Stewart Giveney.
Clyde Henry.
Joseph McCabe.
Cynthia Hunt.
Thank you. Are there any items for public forum this evening?
There are no items for public forum.
Okay, with no items on public forum, let's move on to approval, the staff approvals.
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention?
No, no, I, aye.
Yes.
I said aye.
Yeah.
Okay.
I said all those in favor say aye.
I said aye.
And then moving on to the approval of the minutes from last meeting, May 15th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention, motion passes, minutes approved. Moving on to certificates of appropriateness for this evening. Jaclyn, starting with case number one. I guess that's been moved to staff approval, case number two moved to staff approval, so case number three, 427 Cleveland Avenue.
Yeah, so first up we have 427 Cleveland Avenue, is the applicant here for that today?
Come forth. And before you sit down, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
If you could state your full name and association with the property for record.
I do, John Riatt Casto, and I'm a part of the development team for this project.
Wonderful, thank you. It's Jaclyn.
Okay, this application for 427 Cleveland Avenue includes both site work and new construction of a pool house. And then because those items are being done, variance recommendations are coming up again, or zoning is required, variances to be redone. So the commission at the business meeting had some questions about clarification on whether it was appropriate or not to provide a recommendation for variances that do apply to the listed portion of the property specifically, and just wanting to be sure they're not overstepping. So we did get confirmation that the zoning department will ask for a recommendation for the site as a whole, and that's for their clarity of review. And then we also dived in a bit more and found there's variances that were kind of recommended in pieces and parts over time. So all the variances that are being requested for a recommendation today have been previously recommended by the HRC. So none of the variances will be new. And to that effect, for the variance portion, staff recommends that the variance COA know that the commission recommends and supports all the proposed variances, but with the clarification that the commission understands some variances may not apply directly to the historic portion of the property, and that's to acknowledge that some of them will not.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then as far as the business meeting feedback for the other portions of the application, the commission had noted that they would like to see some more details, such as wall sections and things like that nature, that they usually see with other projects for the proposed pool building, and that conceptually it looked okay, but wanted to have those final details to confirm. And the applicant has submitted some revised information. And then the commission had generally noted that they understand the purpose of the pool for the new residential use and supported the location behind the listed building and the vegetation, and know that the landscape materials appear to be complete. And I think that's it for the business meeting feedback. So overall, again, the staff recommendation is an affirmative recommendation of the variances, and also recommends approval of the non-variance portion of the application, COA 2500091 at 427 Cleveland Avenue, which is the individually listed Ford Motor Company Branch Assembly Plant. And with any and all clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to issuing suffer certificate, the staff, the basis for the staff recommendation is the city code 3116.13, specifically letter A, standards for site improvements, as well as the city code standards for alteration, 3116.11, specifically numbers nine and 12, and then the guidelines regarding just generally garages and outbuildings, which are on page 86 through 87. And with that, I'll turn it over to the commission.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there anything the applicant would like to add before we start our discussion?
Uh, no, she got it right.
Thank you. Okay, moving over to discussion amongst the commission here. We've got a set of variances, and then we do have updated information, it looks like, and details on the pool building itself.
Looks good.
Well, yeah, I agree. We're seeking just the recommendation of a positive variance at this point.
Well, there's the variance, but then the pool building itself is a new approval.
So part of that is triggering the need to re-recommend the variances.
My only question is, does the commission feel comfortable, based on the material provided, that this is consistent with other individual listings we've reviewed, where there's been, you know, accessory structures or other things next to a historic building? Is the commission okay with the materiality, the details proposed? I know that there is wall sections, but the, again, the detailing seems a little bit lighter than some of our other applications. And just, I would like to know for record here, when we approve the materials itself, are you okay with the cement board siding, why, those kinds of things?
I mean, the drawings seem to be at the same level as what we would get for a garage. Which is a small accessory building in the same way. We have approved other backyard type structures for pools and that type of a thing for residential, a lot. So I guess I'm kind of looking at consistency with what we've done before. We have a lot for contemporary, as long as the materials are, you know, consistent, but there's nothing like that would be damaging to the character of the neighborhood.
And I would argue that we have a little more leeway, given it's not part of the registered, the registered building. It is separated, even though they want us to look at it as a project.
Right, and that's what we've done in the past, when people wanted to build a swimming pool in their backyard and little various other buildings, you know, if it's, if it's totally out of character, it's going to be like, you know, a shocker, you know, driving down the street, then we said, we've said no, but if it's.
As I recall, though, this pool building actually is on the listed part of the property, correct?
I thought it wasn't.
Is it? Yes, the pool building itself, I think we're, for the variances, some of them may apply more broadly to the project.
Thank you.
But it doesn't touch the building.
Does not touch the building, correct? You know, I just look at there are structures people propose in the backyards, and I want to make sure that we fairly have evaluated this applicant, and as we have others. And the thing that caught my eye was, example, the cement board lap siding. Many applicants, we've said, well, what is the, what is the lap? Show us that lap, how many inches are exposed? What is the ultimate, is there a texture, is it plain? We don't have any of that information here. So to me, there's some missing information. Ultimately, this is also providing a signal for the pool building structure. There just maybe needs to be some clarity surrounding that. It's nothing that I don't think staff couldn't work with the applicant on, of course, because this, you know, lap siding is lap siding.
I would also think about visibility from the complex itself, so who's going to be able to see that until the foliage is grown and that sort of thing? And exposure to the elements, so you're going to have some of that lifting and moving, and if it's shading, you're going to see that sort of that character from that kind of material, you're going to see that sort of change within the heat, moisture. And I'm assuming this is going to be winterized, or there's, in the winter, it's just going to be cold.
Correct, correct.
So there might be some of that that starts to impact the way that that material is perceived.
Yeah, I think I agree with Clyde that the, although I agree with you, Commissioner, the detailing is somewhat limited. And given the complexity of the structure, I'd be comfortable with applicant working with staff to finalize. There are, I mean, like you mentioned, there are questions I also have about how the details are resolved, but I'm also, it's a very simple building, and there's not that many transitions, it's a few planes and a handful of materials, so I don't have too much heartburn about just moving to staff.
Nothing additional.
Okay.
Is there any clarification from the applicant that would be helpful for the commission regarding materials?
I would just like if the applicant could work with you on, generally, we have approved sidings that don't have textures, cement board sidings that don't mimic faux wood finishes, for example. That may be something that you could work with staff to clarify.
Okay.
Additionally, you know, joint conditions, there's no corner trims or corner boards. We have typically in historic districts or next to historic structures, been consistent about that kind of review. I know it is a contemporary aesthetic, so if that's the, if we want to let the applicant maintain that really contemporary aesthetic, that seems to be the direction, that would be okay.
What about the overlap?
Lap size is another thing, but then again, I don't know, you know, the, I'll defer to others.
Do we have a standard? I don't know.
There has been a standard for garages and for other places, and it's, it's a four inch.
Four to five inch, usually for garages or alpines in general. So for this particular building, being a pool building, I think there's some room for discussion of whether we would require that, or if this is just fully contemporary in style.
I mean, it presents itself as a contemporary building.
I agree.
So, I mean, I can't see doing the wood corners and in the final siding, like for a garage.
I just want to make sure we hold all applicants, discuss why, and put that on record.
Yeah, and, and, and and we have approved other, other, other contemporary buildings as infill buildings on sites in which we said, we looked at the scale, we looked at the lines, we looked at various other factors, but allowed material, different material to use.
Did we have paint colors called out in the cemental already? If not, maybe that's something that the applicant could work with staff on.
Yeah, I believe there is some paint colors, and if not, we include that as part of the motion.
And the final thing would be any light fixtures, I somehow think there's going to be light fixtures mounted somewhere in this building, that those get followed up in a cemental to staff.
I think Adam's got some specs pulled up here. That might be helpful.
Have you thought about running them vertically?
Pardon?
Have you thought about running them vertically? Or is there a height? Is it the end of the material going to be weird with the finish of the length, or?
But, yeah, into the, pardon?
Just curious, I didn't know what other options.
It could be. The idea, I guess, for the most part, this building is meant to just sort of disappear, you know, it's a secondary building for washrooms for the pool and drinking fountain. So if, if you, if you guys, we're happy to work with staff to come up with more details, exactly what you asked for, and something would be happy.
And, and I think the lighting that's in here is all related to the site lighting. What I refer to is if there's any wall mount lighting, sconces, any, there's nothing.
You got it.
Yeah, there's nothing indicating any of that, so if there is any fixtures, I would defer to staff to approve those. And if there's any questions, staff could always come back, but I'm sure you can work with staff on an acceptable fixture.
Absolutely.
There's no further, I think we'd entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of variances and the approval of the pool building.
So moved, with the caveats that the applicant will work with staff on the items that we identified as part of this meeting. Do you need this repeated, Jaclyn, or you're okay?
I will repeat them out, just to make sure that we have them straight. So we're looking for clarification about the details, such as any trims and dimensions for boards, paint colors, any light fixtures specific to the building, and any final details that may not be included, be submitted to staff.
Signage.
Also good.
Having a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll follow up within about three to five business days, usually we like to say, and then we can get our minutes done and send out seatways and things.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have the same problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have the same problem, like trying to get back to the agenda?
Yeah, I'm just looking.
We're having a technical problem here.
I sometimes do that, if I can't find it.
Just went on the internet, found it, turned the city, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know what happened, it's like a.
The person, a fly. This should be over here in June.
Great, thank you, sorry about that. Touch anything.
I know.
Okay, moving on to case number four, 463, 479 North Front, or sorry, North High Street.
North High Street, okay. Mr. Chair, I need to accuse.
Okay, let the record reflect that Clyde will be recusing himself. And if you could both come up and state your, raise your right hands. Do you each swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Each state your name and, full name and association with the property for record.
I'm Matthew Lorenz, I'm a project manager with Department of Public Service Division, design and constructor.
Chad Smith, architect with NBBJ, and we are representing the design team.
Great, thank you, have a seat. Jaclyn.
Okay, this application for 463 through 479 North High Street involves the refuse enclosures, as well as replacing an exterior stair and landing the Wall Street side. So just to recap, the Department of Public Service Streetscape project that will reconstruct Wall Street and the adjacent sidewalk. Due to all that, the existing refuse enclosures that are currently on site are going to be removed, and then new refuse enclosures are going to be constructed. One of those refuse enclosures are able to fit on the same Wall Street, another one is going to be, need to be moved to Vine Street. And so at that, at the June business meeting, with the Vine Street one being more visible and on the more highly trafficked pedestrian area, the commission had more focus with that particular refuse enclosure, and noted how they see that the simple panel design from the rear of the brick building that's adjacent or will be adjacent to it is being referenced in option C that's proposed by the applicant, and that the wood paneling looks like it was moving in the right direction. The commission noted that the wood enclosure in the rendering appears heavy, but that may be down to just a color issue. The commission noted that the railcar reference seems out of place on the Vine Street side, so recommend avoiding metal or an industrial style that may be less appropriate for that more heavily pedestrian traversed area. So moving on, staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application COA 2500091 at 463 to 479 North High Street in the North Market Historic District with the following conditions. And that is updated drawings be submitted to staff for final review and approval, just referencing the commission feedback regarding the colors. And the basis for the staff recommendation is the city code 3116.13, standards for site improvements, specifically letter A, the standards for alteration, 316.11, specifically numbers nine and 12, and then the guidelines regarding the street furniture, which is on page 82. Thank you.
Great, is there anything in the applicant I'd like to add? We, you know, I can think back, if anything, I think we were just struggling with the Vine Street component at this point.
Yeah, so, so following the comments from the previous commission meeting, we went back as a design team, looked at the different references that we had. The sheets that were earlier on in the cemental were the updated drawings, after we had a chance to look at the details, both different alternatives. And the design team's preference in working through this was to do a metal structure that's more reminiscent, you know, following what we heard at the previous commission, that, hey, how does it fit into a story? Putting a little bit more focus on those details and stuff like that. The options that were submitted just before the previous meeting were done as, hey, these are, you know, using the same kind of structure, these are a couple of different options of, you know, different treatments, say whatever the commission would approve.
And I think, given the scale of the enclosure, there was a question remaining if there was an appetite for maintaining some of the metal paneling from a resilient standpoint in that area, also pulling from the history of the site being along the rail lines and the battleship building, which is further on down the road. It didn't seem that far out of place, especially if the color palette is pulling from the, the Perry sign?
The Yankee.
Yankee, Yankee sign that is there, and the dark blue that's coming from the window openings, and I'm pointing it behind you all, but forgive me. Again, there was, there was a question if there was an appetite still. Again, there is not an intent that we're looking at a commodity type of corrugated sheet metal type. It would be more of a steel plate, or, you know, the shapes of the steel are also cold steel sections, and it does have, we are looking at articulating the details for the sliding door and the framework there, so that it does have a scale for pedestrians, and it's not, try not to be too visually heavy. Again, we were asking just that consideration and that clarification, if there was any appetite for that.
I, I think, going back to this, I mean, my concern just was, is this is a very visual corridor. Was there any way to soften it, lighten it, make it more appropriate next to the brick structure? It's kind of a very prominent facade, it's on Vine Street, a lot of people walk through there. I don't think I took any exception to the other enclosure in its entirety, I got the whole idea there.
And one on Wall Street, sir?
Yeah, yeah, the alley, completely one that's situated on the alley, it just seemed like it kind of worked and fit. But I defer if anybody else has questions or comments, but, I mean, I think, I recall at the business meeting, folks started leaning towards maybe your option C, option D, options that were at the end.
So moving more to a wood type of?
Yeah, something that mimicked the panel door on, that on the back of this building, I think, was, or on the alleyway side. Right in that image that just popped up right now, that that was more, maybe keeping with it, but.
Yeah, but I think we were using as a reference the building, not the battleship building, not the railcar stuff. So that was our vernacular that we were, that we were connecting to.
The immediate building.
Yeah.
We're trying to, I think most of us struggle to say, why is the railcar important here at all? It didn't really, it just didn't really fit in with the story a little bit, but.
So the clarification is, the detailing is acceptable with the wood paneling, the wood detailing? It's also acceptable as details are drawn? Again, I was just looking for clarification on the caveats there.
What was that against that?
I was going to say C and D, I think.
C and D are in line.
Yeah, before we take it too much further.
And just.
What's your thoughts were, if you had a particular interest of material that you use, or aesthetic?
Sure.
Yeah.
The. I'm intelligent.
Yeah. The, see, I'm curious about that blue color, and obviously the way things render. Yeah. Really hard on the screen, but I'm curious about the intention of that blue, is it to, it's to match? To be a very close match to, to. Okay. The existing colors are on the thing. Okay. You know, trying to color that. Using the same color blue would just blend away, you wouldn't see that there was. Sure, okay, understood. Yeah, and obviously, it's just, they're displaying differently right now, but understood the intent.
Just help me out here, too, there's, it looks like there's a window that will get covered up on the building, and has the, you know, thinking about the impact on a historic structure, have you worked with the property owner regarding that covering of the window?
So the bottom basement window there, the third one?
Yes.
Yes, we, we have talked with the property owner about that, he was willing to accept that, closing that over, and he didn't have any complaints.
As a temporary closure or a permanent closure?
Well, the, the window would remain there, but it would be blocked permanently by the enclosure.
And Jaclyn, your recommendation is you feel comfortable that you would, based on a recommendation of A, B, C, or D, be able to work with the applicant on a full, a final proof drawing?
Yes, if, now, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we might have some final materials such as color, but if there's anything else specific, we can note those, and I can confirm, be comfortable just for moving to staff, yeah. Is there any additional particulars that the commission thinks would be helpful? That they feel, you feel comfortable in moving or approving with final materials to be submitted to staff?
I mean, I, I feel comfortable with option D, because it's the painted clad frame version, it seems to be the softest, most compatible thing.
I agree, I think I have those two.
The least of the evils. I think there's an individual by the door, I don't know if somebody could grab him.
I'm making motion.
Sure.
Okay, down there. You're okay?
Yeah.
For application COA 250091, 463 to 479 North High Street, I would like to make a motion to approve for either C or D, and that the final details, cut sheets, and materials be sent to staff for final approval.
Second.
So, since we have a motion and a second, I'd actually like to encourage you to revise your motion to include one option, not, not either or.
C or D?
No, D.
Just D, okay. Are we all in agreement? I'll make that, that, excuse me, amend my motion to include D.
And I will support that with a new second.
Is that just the color difference?
Sure.
It's the material.
Switzelino.
Brass steel frame versus painted and clad? Yeah, I'm fine with that.
It's going to match the back of the.
It's fine.
But, what is the name of that color, by the way?
What was the?
What's the name of that color, that blue, steel blue color?
The existing blue.
We, we haven't, we haven't.
Perfect. Time to add the existing blue.
But we'll work with that property owner to figure out if they had a color. They had come through the commissions on when they remodeled that building years ago, we'll work with them, figure out what that is. Great.
Okay. So motion and second, any further discussion, any other things you need, Jaclyn?
No, just for that final color, we'll just need either the manufacturer paint chip, or if it's matched the existing paint chip on the building, a photo of the custom color, if their custom color is needed, that way we have it for our documentation.
So hearing no further discussions, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
And thank you for your efforts to come up with a sensitive addition to the streetscape.
Thank you.
As opposed to the lesser of all evils.
Thank you all.
Take care.
Thanks.
I think then, for the record, Clyde, you're going to be back in the meeting at this point?
I am back in the meeting.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, let the record reflect that. And moving on to case number five, which would be 652 Linwood Avenue, do we have anybody here for 652? Come on up. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
If you could state your full name and association with the property for record.
Dennis Steinbeck, and I'm good.
Okay, wonderful, have a seat, Jaclyn.
Okay, this application for 652 Linwood Avenue is a proposal to install a hoop house with the doors per the submitted materials. The application previously also included installation of a fence. The applicant had revised their fence proposal, and so the commission was able to move the fence to approval at the last hearing, absence of the applicant. The commission asked, or continued the application portion for the hoop house in order to have the discussion with the applicant and have some additional information. So at the June business meeting, the commission asked if staff could follow up again with the building department regarding whether the hoop house requires a permit or zoning clearance, and whether the hoop house is legally a structure. and whether the hoop house is legally a structure. The commission know that a large plastic outbuilding up year round is of concern. So staff did not hear back from building, did try again to get some clarification. However, we do have the definition for structure from the city code. And it does appear that the hoop house would just fall under the definition of structure as opposed to a building. So in general, staff recommends establishing a timeline for either a temporary or seasonal structure for the hoop house. If it's intended to be, you know, just a temporary structure. If the structure is proposed to remain year round indefinitely, then staff recommends submitting a revised proposal to have the structure better meet city code and guidelines for garages and outbuildings. So there we go, that recommendation there. And then that is based on the city code standards for site improvements, three one one six point one three, specifically letter A. And then the guidelines regarding garages and outbuildings on pages eighty-six to eighty-seven. And we have the definition for structure from the city code, title forty-one, building code, chapter four, one oh one for definitions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to add anything?
Uh, no, just ready for questions.
Did you get your fence in?
Uh, I've got the back section in.
I saw it across the back, but okay.
So I think in general, tell us about your hoop house.
Yeah, so I.
As we've had, we as a commission have had a lot of questions about this because it doesn't fit the normal mold at all for anything we've reviewed, I think.
Okay, uh, yeah, so I'm like a locally known, like orchid expert. And I go speak at societies all over the country and stuff, so I grow my collection at home. Uh, but I just don't want to throw it indoors anymore. I'd like to have like a nice controlled environment for it. Uh, and so, yeah, it's just kind of how's my orchid collection. The structure itself, I would like to keep it up year round, uh, so that I don't have to bring a thousand plants into the house when it's cold outside. Uh, so I guess whatever, you know, we have to like look at for having it be a more like year round structure, that's fine.
Was there a reason you chose the hoop model?
Uh, yeah, it's easily assemblable. Uh, I can control the temperature like pretty easily in it. Uh, and like having the nice like hoop structure is easy for me to walk in.
What is the, if you're familiar, what's the manufacturer recommend of the life cycle of the structure?
So the hoops are permanent, they're steel. Uh, but the plastic, I replace that every about four years.
It's about a four year winner.
Yeah.
So, so it's, it's basically a greenhouse.
Yeah.
So we should evaluate this as a greenhouse. Okay. It's a very large greenhouse compared to other structure or other greenhouses that we've looked at. Why is it not? Why isn't it horizontal? What, why does it? Are the hoops different sizes? It looks like it's thicker or higher in part of it or lower in other areas. Why isn't it on a level foundation or a level structure?
So, yeah, the hoop, the hoops are different heights. So the front of it is just under seven feet and the back is about nine feet. Uh, it's to accommodate different types of plants. Um, so the back gets like significantly warmer, so I'm able to grow warmer growing species, whereas the front stays a little bit cooler. Uh, I can get the airflow moving faster in a smaller structure, so I grow like colder growing stuff there.
And the plastic is supposed to be saggy like an old sheet?
Uh, no, when I get it up and running, uh, it'll be like nice and smooth. Uh, essentially I use like inflator fans inside to, to create a bit of like an air layer, uh, to be able to like keep the heat in. So it won't, it won't be saggy when it's like fully running.
You don't have any pictures of one that's constructed the way it would normally look?
Yeah, I could.
Like a manufacturer's picture?
Or even manufacturers cut sheets, anything from them?
Yeah.
Could give us an idea of a totally constructed one?
Yeah, I, I could, I could email you a photo or stick it on the application if you'd like.
And this is, uh, what we're seeing here. What step in the process are you in right here?
This is, I have hoops up, I have the plastic over. Uh, I have some benches inside and some materials, but I don't have any plants in it yet.
Okay, so it sort of looks like this currently?
Yeah, this is what it looks like.
Live photo, okay.
You don't think of this as finished?
Oh, no, this is not finished, no.
But that is the plastic that will be used.
Yeah, uh, and it's not reflective, uh, like there's actually a shade cloth that goes inside. So it's not gonna like catch the sun and shine anywhere. Um, and is also not visible from the front of the street, so.
What's the overall height at the highest point?
The highest point is like nine foot two.
So it's about a foot and some over the top of the fence when you get your fence going?
Yeah.
So you got sixty-eight feet in length. It's about twelve and a half feet wide. When do you anticipate doing the, um, rest of your fence?
Possibly next week.
Uh, okay.
Not really sure yet, but hoping to get it done by the middle of summer.
So is this like a commercial structure? You said you, you lecture, you do this, do this like full times, this is like your occupation?
Uh, yeah, uh, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to run a retail space out of my backyard. It's just to house my collection.
I, I'm, I'm honestly intrigued by everything you're talking about. It, it's a really cool thing. Unfortunately, I have to take the coolness factor down though and say, how does this work within our historic district guidelines? I'm truly struggling to see how if this were coming through as a, you know, it's gotta come through as a greenhouse, so to say. How does this look when I look at the front of the street and the streetscape? When I see all these turn of the century red brick houses and I see garages with appropriate detailing? I, I don't, I don't know how to make, I don't know how I have this thing fit within our guidelines. And so, um, this one really kind of pushes the boundary even beyond because of how it's being classified. Cause it's not a temporary structure that comes up and down like, uh, quite often a lot of gardening related things are just seasonal.
Right.
And this having a more permanent year round scenario. I have to say, how do, how would we treat this compared to any other applicant coming through with any other something? And so I'm, I'm still stuck honestly in a, how do we look at this thing? Cause we, I think generally as a commission have always looked favorably upon the applicant, trying to get to the point where the applicant is to say, hey, let, let, we're trying to see your point of view. And it's not that I don't see your point of view and, you know, any other place it'd be like, hey, great, you know? This is a cool thing. I'm just struggling how it fits in the contextual appropriateness.
Well, especially since it's clearly a garage or outbuilding.
It's big.
It's not, it's not.
But you also can't see, well, now you can see it from the street, but once the, the fence is up, uh, adding that extra foot of height over the chain link, you won't be able to see it from the front of the street.
You'll be able to see it from the alley though.
Uh, the alley, you'll be able to see like the top foot and a half of the back of it.
Okay, because the fence is going all the way across the alley up to the garage.
I think that a good opportunity, just so we have a good understanding is perhaps if you would be willing to submit what it would look like finished.
Okay.
A cut sheet from the material based on, it looks like you may have two different structures together. Maybe one's a little taller than the other, what have you, whatever that's about. Send all that, so we can really get a good idea. I'm very optimistic about trying to help, you know, get you to that, that step. But we also have to look at the fabric and then the conditions and the environment within the guidelines itself. So we gotta figure out how to help you get there. So if it's okay, we'll continue it and then it'll give you time to get the information in, uh, to staff and then we can review this.
Can, and, and we need some like more like real drawings.
Okay.
Like elevations, sections.
Do you have an architectural friend or somebody that could help you do this?
Or, or watch some YouTube, watch some YouTube and, 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 I mean, it's, is it, it's not that complex, but
Right.
we need measured. How far is, is a nine foot section? How far is that? What's the spacing on the thing? What, what's the front looking like, looks the back looking like?
Had to get in doors and flap.
I was gonna say that the number one thing I see is like, if this is a more permanent structure, if we go to the next photo in the file, the next two photos in the file. I can't, I can't actually come to grips with sort of supporting and recommending a favorable view of this as a permanent thing.
What are we looking at?
Yeah, the doors on the end.
The doors on the end sideways.
Sanded down and, and, uh, stained people, like they're matching the fence.
To me, this is not a permanent structure that I could get behind in a historic district to prove it.
If we were to reframe this, let's forget that it's a greenhouse and it's just an accessory structure. So say someone were to come in as, with an accessory structure and say they were gonna build it out of tubular metal and plastic and.
Tipping a lot, yeah.
And, and this type of wood, what would we say?
Yeah, we have, we have flat out denied these.
It would not be.
So I, I, I agree with you. I mean, I, I love the story. It's just really hard if I'm thinking I'm a neighbor and I'm looking at this thing, I'm not very excited about it. And I don't think it represents the historical nature of the neighborhood. And if it could be a temporary structure, then maybe we could look at it differently.
I wonder if we could go there. Is it possible to make it temporary in the winter to bring stuff down? And, or is it too crazy for you to have to do that?
Um, it's, it's definitely possible to make it a seasonal thing.
I think you can get away with more as a seasonal thing than you can with something that's a garage or an outbuilding in an historic district.
Yeah, I, I, I might be able to. It requires some thinking and some shifting around.
I, I'm encouraging the applicant to actually think big and make it more permanent structure. Even that's not just plastic coating too. The other way. Well, it could be Victorian style, but I think there could be something that you would come up with that looks like a greenhouse that may be more fitting for contextual.
Yeah, the, the.
Something with more permanent materials.
Ways you can do it. One way is you can try to disguise it more or you can look at the design and really work at the design and say, you know, what would, what would work? Cause we need to look at it the same way as we would look at a pool house. You saw an earlier pool house?
Yeah.
Up here. Or a, or a garden building that we've looked at before. Most of which have been really nicely designed. They, they've had some really nice detail. They've, they've, they've taken angles from the house, they've taken details from the house. They've, they've imitated the door, they've done all kinds of stuff.
It feels permanent.
And, and so it feels like it was built with the house.
Yeah.
This almost feels like some kids making a fort in the backyard and want to leave it up year round. So I think we need some more design and permanence to it.
The other piece is you've got about eight hundred and fifty square feet, give or take a little, a lot of space. So I get your point. So maybe, maybe, you know, look at really what is necessary. And if you wanna get to this structure, maybe there's a more suitable piece from that manufacturer. I'm not sure, I'm just sort of throwing that out there.
I do have a question though, still this goes back to code. And this is something, Jacqueline, I don't know if this is connecting with your colleagues and other divisions on. It's just given the square footage of the structure, does this trigger anything with setbacks, fire ratings, anything else that are going to be a concern because of proximity to the property lines?
There's a heat.
Especially if it's all of a sudden being a structure that's staying up year round as a permanent structure. You know, we, we may be looking at something that maybe has other code implications to it, I, based on the building code itself. And so I just wanna make sure that the applicant has the right knowledge in front of them too.
And, and what about site coverage? Is there a, is there a requirement and as to how much of the site can be covered in that particular location?
I think it's gonna come down to square footage. Uh, that's usually where, um, code requires a permit. That's the threshold of if it's, it might be like a hundred and sixty-eight square feet or larger or something like that.
This is definitely bigger than that. So that's why I'm like, you're gonna be in building permit territory, which is gonna require more than what we're gonna ask for, I assume.
I think classification of a garage or outbuilding brings a whole host of other opportunities your way.
Okay.
We're just trying to alert you what some of those are. I also have to say, you have a great story.
Yeah.
And wonderful thing that you're doing and, and right now the building doesn't say that to me and I want that to.
We wanna work with you, wanna figure out a solution to help you out.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Appreciate that.
Make a motion to continue to next month.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, any further?
I have, I have one question. Do you think you have what you need?
To?
Take another stab?
They got, have another stab at it? Uh, yeah.
Uh, cause you always have access to Jacqueline.
Right.
Okay. No further discussion?
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed, extension, motion passes. Just keep working with Jacqueline on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to you coming back.
Yeah, thanks guys.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, case number six and seven, sorry, case number six was moved to staff approval. Case number seven, five seventeen Park Street. You raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony before the commission this evening?
I do.
State your full name and association with the property for record.
Alex Barnett, um, I am with Atlantic Sign Company. We are the sign contractor for this AC Hotel project.
Great, have a seat, sir, and.
Okay, this application for five one seven Park Street, uh, we have an amended scope. The applicant has since clarified since the business meeting that they will be refacing existing signs. So refacing an existing fifty-five square foot internally illuminated wall sign at the top of the south elevation, as well as refacing an existing six point two five square foot blade, also internally illuminated blade sign to the east of the entry at the south elevation. Um, so in total, there are six existing signs, um, including those for the AC Hotel and Lumen, which were initially reviewed and then continued at the May twenty twenty HRC hearing. Um, and then they were moved to staff approval at the June twenty twenty, um, business meeting. So the, then the approval was then renewed in November of twenty twenty-one. At the business meeting, the commission had requested current photos of the elevations where signage is proposed to be installed and asked for clarification on what the full signage, the existing and proposed for the property for better clarity. The commission know that the street pedestrian level signs may need to be adjusted to better meet the guidelines. The commission had expressed concern, uh, that the windows for the historic frassades for the building in general were approved to be restored, but still appear to be in disrepair. And previously noted that this area is very lively, but has been impacted following the new construction with a lot of tenant spaces remaining empty. In response to the commission feedback, the applicant has clarified that they will be refacing existing signs only and that the current proposal will not alter the parameters for the prior signage approval. The applicant has provided additional photos and information regarding the prospective tenants as well. And then we were able to track down some feedback from the May twenty twenty hearing. With, I think COVID at that time, we don't have the record from the June twenty twenty business meeting. But however, based on the feedback provided at the May hearing, as well as the amendments or alterations made to the application prior from its initial submission to final approval, there are some alterations that we can identify that were made. And those include the CL point one and CL point two signs. So those that read AC Hotel Columbus had been revised to be externally illuminated only with gooseneck lighting and to be under twenty-five square feet. So those were the changes that were, had been made. And then based on that May twenty twenty review, the approval of the remainder of the signage is due to the building being new construction, the locations and the context of the new construction, the limitation on the internal illumination. So only the letters were going to be illuminated as opposed to the whole, um, sign there. The simplicity of the signs, the size, and then the signage themselves being for on premise, on premises businesses. Um, so those were all items brought, um, in that discussion for that May twenty twenty hearing. With their current proposal being a refacing of the existing signs and no changes to the previous approval of that style of illumination, location or size, staff therefore recommends approval of refacing those existing signs. Um, and so that would be approval of application COA two five zero zero five four five, five one seven Park Street in the North, North Market Historic District. With any and all clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to issuing self or certificate. The basis for the staff recommendation is that prior review and those being existing signs. Um, and then generally the city code three one one six point one three standards for site improvements, specifically letter C, the guidelines regarding signage for both, um, the HRC guidelines and then the short north design guidelines that the HRC has adopted. And those are for wall signs and projecting blade signs. Thank you.
Is there anything the applicant would like to add prior to our discussion?
Just that, I believe that with the comment about the AC Hotel bringing or deteriorating in the neighborhood, um, I hope you all had a chance to review those plans for that first floor and, uh, see that there, there is being a good faith effort by, uh, by ownership to fill those places. And I think with those types of business, that it will help bring back that livelihood of the neighborhood.
So hopefully there's, there's some stuff coming in.
Yes, there's four things coming in.
Great, good.
Spruce Street Sporting, Sorrela Kitchen, Sorrela Patio and Sorrela Parlor.
Sounds like Sorrela's doing a lot. Okay, i- i- if I'm understanding this correctly, you're simply replacing the face of the existing signs. So there's be no increase in the amount of signage, nor will there be, uh, really a difference of materials?
That is correct, but with one clarification, that I do believe the one up top is getting a whole new cabinet, but it will be the exact same design, exact same dimensions.
Okay.
It's a new refinish, just replacement.
Okay, so it's in kind, basically? Okay, so it's in kind, basically, with different graphics.
This this really helped clarify, and thank you for the applicant working with staff to get this. Because in my mind, the exhibit A, total change in square footage, zero from the original approval, which the original approval, this, I remember this hotel coming through, it was a long set of approvals. Illumination changes, zero. So the types of illumination are staying the same. And the structural changes to the building are zero as well, which I, in my mind, aligns with this commission, Greg, this this project stayed in our queue for all time, as I recall. So I I think that really helps me get there a little bit better on this and and actually understand what's going on.
And we note and appreciate the organization's attempts to approve the occupancy and the streetscape and the energy in the district, something we care about.
Absolutely, I'll pass that along.
So the south elevation, is there an existing sign that says AC there that's going to be proposed as being switched to the Astra? Or what's existing there currently?
So the what's existing?
WS dot three.
It it is currently the AC Hotels.
Right.
And then it will be switched over to this to Astra.
Okay, same size.
Exactly the same size.
New cabinet perhaps, but same size of a cabinet, something.
Yeah.
Same size of illuminate, same type of illumination, just a change of of name.
More to add that the restaurant is in there. It still will be AC Hotels. It's the Astra rooftop restaurant.
Okay.
You ready for motion?
Mm hmm.
I move to approve application zero seven C zero eight two five zero zero five five seventeen Park Street is submitted.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
One quick question. So the blade sign, that's the same as what, is there an existing blade currently there?
Yes.
And it says, yeah, okay.
That one is just a reface.
Gotcha, perfect.
There it is, right there.
I think it's for a different restaurant, is that right, currently or Lumen?
That is my understanding that it is different restaurant.
Thank you.
Any other further clarification? Hearing no further discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, extension, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to case number eight, five eighty five South High Street. If you could both raise your right hands. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony for the commission this evening?
I do.
If you could each state your full name and association with the property for records.
Neil Brown with Signcom, working on the sign package.
Jeff, Jeff Ulster, building owner.
Okay, wonderful, have a seat. Jaclyn.
Okay, this application for five eight five South High Street is for new signage. So the applicant would like to replace the existing letter sign at the primary or east facade with a new wall sign. They have revised the application from the initial submit all following the business meeting feedback. So the maximum size for that signage will be twenty five square feet or below. They'd also like to install a new letter wall sign at the cornice along the primary east facade. Those letters would match the cornice color. They'd like to replace the existing wall signs at the north and south ends of the cornice. So this is another alteration to the scope, addressing commission feedback. And they would be replacing those existing signs and then installing new wall letter signage, which would consist of the building numbers only, and those would also match the cornice color. They would also like to reface the existing illuminated blade sign. So original advertisements for this building indicate it was constructed approximately by nineteen sixty five, which would be consistent with the building style and auditor data. Symbol maps do not show the building in place by nineteen sixty one or earlier, so that also is consistent. So somewhere around that nineteen sixty five timeframe. The Louis R. Polster Company was previously located at a different location in Columbus through nineteen sixty four, but then switched to this five eight five South High Street location by nineteen sixty five and appears to have been in place since. So the current proposal varies from the guidelines in that it exceeds the amount of signage outlined in the guidelines. Typically, for buildings, it's one projecting sign and either one wall sign or awning sign. And then the guidelines have a note of the signage is often mounted on the stone lintel between the first and second story, although this is a first, a single story building. However, given the era and the architectural characteristics of the building, it is possible signage similar to the simple letters could historically have been placed between the metal bands of the cornice. But without historic photos or documentation of that historic signage, the commission will need to discuss if the signage as proposed is appropriate to the building and surrounding neighborhood. Just in general, staff recommends any new signage be simple, non illuminated signage within the guideline size appropriate to the age and architecture of the building. And then just to recap from the business meeting, the commission had recommended that the applicant explore options to more closely meet the code and guidelines criteria. And then the commission noted that documentation that the proposed signage matches the original would help in support of varying the signs and that the signage will overall need to be in scale. And then commission had recommended removing the existing signage at the fascia sides to kind of bring down that total amount of signage so that it doesn't exceed the maximum amount as much. In response to the commission feedback, the applicant has submitted those revised materials, reducing the size of that wall sign. And then the applicant is again proposing to remove the existing signage at the fascia and then replacing with the building address numbers only. So the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application COA two five zero zero one two of five eight five South High Street in the Brewery Historic District, with any and all clarifications to be submitted to staff for review and approval prior to issuance of a certificate. The basis for that staff recommendation is the city code three one one six point one three standards for site improvements, specifically letter C. And then the guidelines, regular HRC guidelines regarding signage, and then short north design guidelines regarding signage. Thank you.
Thank you. What would the applicant like to have add before we start our discussion?
Okay.
You've you've been here a long time. The company has been a long time, so. I'll open this up to.
Yeah, I have a clarification. Is the packages we're reviewing it, this is the proposal or because Jaclyn, it sounded like you had mentioned maybe there was some negotiation about certain elements not being included in the package. I just want to clarify, there was like item one, two, three, and four. Are all of those signs still being proposed?
Correct.
So this is this is accurate.
This is the package.
This is the package, okay. And are we still exceeding the square footage, the recommended square footage?
Yeah, so based on the guidelines, we are exceeding, oh, sorry, we're not exceeding the square footage. That has been brought down to, and those meets the guidelines. The only item that we are varying from the guidelines is the number of signage.
Yeah.
And and the square footage was calculated for the block letters as the blocks letters.
It, based on their documentation, we have both the block letter measurements and then I think the one back we have, or can we go into the one that we are just before this? Yeah, so we have the the whole calculation for the whole sign.
At the the letters in the fascia, in some ways, I view those as architectural elements rather than signage. Yeah, the of the era, it seems so appropriate. And so I'm.
I agree.
It's so subtle, but I think age appropriate for me that I don't want to set a precedent here, but I I think for this particular building, this is an appropriate application.
Is that also because it's the color that essentially matches the background?
It helps a lot.
That's what I thought.
And those are not illuminated.
So in this case, you're willing to make an exception for the polster and the fascia?
Well, I'd like to talk about that with the commission, make sure that we're not setting any precedence.
Well, yeah, just just interested to hear, you know, individually, how you 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 generally would potentially consider that.
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and I would just like to hear from the applicant. Tell us about the the reason rationale and why for the need for additional signage. You know, when when I think about what this business is, I would feel like you're seeking this business out. You've probably looked it up on your phone. You have an address, you're coming to the building. But but tell us why, in your words, you you need to go beyond with the additional quantity of signs.
Yeah. So I I really, we have the sign, the letters on the building. And and then we have the sign that hangs down from the sidewalk. It was kind of mentioned, I thought, like, none of it is so overwhelming or anything like that. And that those fascia boards are just plain white material and and like, you know, between me and my brother, we were talking about it. We both thought that those letters, the way they are, they're not so standout. It enables you to see the building a little better, to the name on the building. Because the sign underneath the facade, it's not so easy to see. And the sign that's hanging down, you see it from the north or you see it from the south. But so we thought it gave it, you could see the name on the building a little better and also that it it looks good. We just thought of, like, we don't think it takes away from the neighborhood or anything like that. We don't, you know, we like the neighborhood very much.
Are people finding it harder to find your building?
I can't relate to that.
I think it's, I think it does a great job of celebrating that oddball piece of nineteen sixties architecture there. We we erased the round bar, that wonderful teal brick building that we have there, which was a pretty outrageous for the area, you know, colored brick. If you guys remember that, it looked a lot like that, like the store that they took down in in Upper Arlington. I think it was like teal brick, pretty interesting, so that's gone. So we have a lot of old historic buildings in German Village. This is a really sixties piece of design here. And I think what we're doing is is adding to it and celebrating it as opposed to trying to cover it up with some terrible T one eleven siding and, you know, the kinds of other things we've seen people do to try to modernize some of this vintage sixties architecture. So I think we're honestly, if if it was a historic German village building, you know, built in the eighteen hundreds, we'd be, it'd be like trying to remodel the porch to the way it was done in the eighteen hundreds. And in that respect, we're sort of celebrating the architecture in this and elevating it a little bit, adding non illuminated stainless letters to the fascia.
I I do have a question, though, for the for the building owner. Do you know how how long or how old that signage is that's on the brick wall?
Yeah.
How how long that's, has that been there?
I would say it's probably about twenty years old, maybe twenty five, twenty twenty five. I actually was involved in, but I'm not.
Okay. Just the very simple words and lettering.
Okay, I I think the signage on the wall or the change of the signing on the wall, I don't think anybody has a problem. I don't have a problem with that. I think that's pretty straightforward. I think the changing to take the red letters off and just to put the five, five, five eighty five.
Address.
Address on there.
I, that's, that's mentally improved.
I have, I have no problem with that change either. So I think the discussion comes down to the stainless steel up there. You you raise an interesting point. If a German village house was built in eighteen ninety, wanted to modify their porch to make it look fancier as a fancier eighteen nineties house, we would say no. Because historically, if it didn't have the bric a brac on in eighteen ninety and you add the bric a brac now, then you're faking that history. So there's a couple of arguments here, I guess, in that is it contextual? Would it be, would people think it was there all the time? If so, we don't really want that. The other issue issues are, how many signs can you have on the building? Because you're already in excess. The the sign that hangs down, the blade sign, I guess that was existing. So you're replacing in kind.
And it's two sided.
And I.
Logo changed.
Right, right. But but basically, because because normally, I don't think we would allow you to have a blade sign and a sign flat on the building. So you're already doubling the number of signs that you would normally have. But I think because it's there, you're 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 just changing the surface of it, so I can live with that. Anyway, that's just my thoughts.
I think that it comes down to the block letters in the front, to your point. I'm an architectural historian, this is not my period. I sort of resonate with the, is a part of the architecture. I have not seen that kind of signage that is on my period. I've not seen that kind of signage on an existing building of sort of mid century. Do you guys have examples of that you can share with us?
We did not collect examples of that.
I'm sorry?
We did not collect examples of that, no.
Oh, but in your visual memory, do you remember that you've seen that?
I think I have seen stuff like that.
Is it possible to?
For grocery stores and things like that. So usually larger facades and larger letters could be read from farther away, like across the parking lot. And the reality is, this is High Street. So the sign that is hanging down perpendicular is really sort of pedestrian oriented, that's pedestrian scale.
Right.
Really not legible as you're driving by. The wall sign being flat, stainless, you know, it's. Yes, I suppose we could say that that is vehicular signage, because it's attached to the side of the building, although it's pretty small for vehicular signage, attached to the building. It's not colorful, it's not a big cabinet. So it's, again, it's pretty subtle. And I'm of the mind that generally, if you're talking design stuff, if you're going to make something subtle, you sometimes need to make it big to have it be seen. Or if it's going to be a really, really loud color, then you can, you know, make it a lot smaller. And that doesn't need to be as large if it's going to be a bright color. There's nothing here that jumps out at you as shouting sign, you know, signage across the street. And so I think all of it works together very cohesively. I think it tidies things up, gives us an opportunity to get rid of the white and red, very temporary looking panels that are at the end of the facade and really, quite frankly, cleans the place up. And I don't think that that's a bad thing. I think that's worth the time and effort that we've put into the design work for this and his, his, you know, money that he's spending on cleaning up the building.
And we'd be the last people to say that we don't, we appreciate the amount of design time and energy you put into it, no question. We have certain things we must live underneath. So that's kind of what we're grappling with. So I think the question is, is the, do we think of the letters as being part of the architecture of the building or truly as the sign? I think that is a key question. I also think the other key question is, have we seen issues like this before? The Brewery District, this is not German Village. The round bar was not German Village. All of High Street is a Brewery District. The Brewery District is remarkable for being very quirky. It's not homogenous. There's lots of weird stuff that happens there, and we celebrate that. So I'm open to celebrating something modernist in this way in that area.
Well, you 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 make a point. I mean, this is the Brewery District.
Right.
And you're you're certainly the authority on on the Brewery District.
I used to be on the Brewery District Commission, so.
Yeah, the 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 board's merged. So so you would have a better understanding of what the character of that neighborhood is.
Perky.
Yeah, so I guess we look to you for.
I'm all over Perky. The question is, are we willing to break the rules for the number of signs? And to to the point of our chairman, he's trying to say, do you think that's, are you trying to get more people to show up? Is that what the sign is for?
It would help.
You really think that?
If if we took out the fascia lettering, the polster right behind me on the screen now, everybody else here would generally, I'm seeing support, support package.
Easy.
So part of my wonder would be is to keep this applicant moving along is could we break this into two, which is to approve everything with the exception of this and allow you time to gather some contextual examples of and build your additional material around why this sign would be appropriate.
Historically.
Yes.
What we used to have on that wall were letters made out of like a a white plastic with P O L S D R. There were separate blocks, probably about sixteen inches square, and they stuck out about six to eight inches. It was just.
Up on the fascia.
It was on the, it was on the brick below the fascia. But it displayed, it was a whole different type of signage. But one of the letters, or two of them over time, had gotten broken. So they had aluminum frames on them. So we actually saved those letters, but we took them down. And that we put up when we put that sign down. But um.
Do you have any pictures of that?
Appreciate if you could accommodate us with those letters. They would match the trim of the building, too. So nothing would be clashing with.
Do you have any historic photos of those bigger block letters?
I did, we have them actually, yeah, I could give you a picture, but they're not on the.
No, no, just a picture of what it used to be there, you know, again.
You know, but but I I mean.
So part of our, part of our challenges is that, so right now, if we if we take this piece out of the equation, right, you're sort of like. out of the, the equation, right, you're sort of like for like.
And it keeps in.
The moment we add this into the mix, we have to defend every action of why we're approving something that goes above and beyond what the code allows and, and, and you're doing. And we have to provide a rationale for why we can support that. And I think what I see here, at least what I'm sensing from at least a couple commissioners is this one component of your package is the one thing that we need a stronger case for. And it's, it's not that we're saying no, we're saying we just probably need additional information on why is this appropriate.
And one example would be the old sign because it harkens to the.
I'm trying to help you out here.
The letters. Another way would be if you can show us contemporary, not necessarily in Columbus, but any kind of contemporary building that has this kind of structure, that would give us an historical basis to be able to say, we're different, we're different for this building because of these situations.
Uh, question, when was building built again? Sixty-four?
It was, it was built about sixty, we, we built it, I think, over like a period about sixty.
So did you guys build it?
Yeah.
Have it built? So they had it built. His name is Pollster. Don't people, when they used to build buildings, put their names on them and we sort of know them as those buildings? It's kind of interesting, it's a landmark.
And then, in the nineteenth century, I would agree, but what we're asking for is, could you provide us additional material that helps support your case on this particular item?
And we're willing to, I think.
I think we're willing to hear additional argument for this one sign. I think what I'm sensing though is that our commission is willing to keep everything else here already proposed moving along too for you.
Yeah, the, the um, difference for me um, of why I'm interested in exploring this, it would be easy to say no, you have too many signs, right? But what, what is interesting to me is that for me, it, it seems like that particular sign could be of that era and actually elevates the architecture in the sense that it's appropriate. And uh, if you can show contextual examples, then like the commissioners are asking here, I think that that would make it an easier um, ask. And, and so uh, you know, understand the, the, the reasoning for why you guys want it. But if you can provide us with some more materials, I think uh, Commissioner McCabe said, well, why don't we just break out two parts? We can get your other three signs approved and then we can continue the other piece.
Okay, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying and I agree with you. Overall, it does enhance the building agenda, so.
So let's, so let's break it into two pieces.
Okay, great. I would entertain a motion to break this into two pieces at this point.
Go ahead.
I have the computer that doesn't hardly work. So let me see, what's the um, COA number?
I can help.
The COA number is COA two-five-zero-zero-five-one-two.
What she said.
A for um, fourteen hundred signs and I can't find, what is it, five?
Five-eight-five.
Five. Five-eight-five South High Street. Part A is to include the in-kind replacement of the blade sign, same frame, different text, removing the south elevation, red letter address and also the name and replacing just the numbers for the building, the five-eight-five and a silver stainless appearance in color. And also to alter the wall sign that is um, pedestrian height to remove the material that's existing and replace it with what is proposed, with the pollster name.
There, second.
Second.
Having an emotion in a second, is there any further clarification needed?
I just wanted to confirm, I think the um, the fascia signs, they might be on like the north and the south elevations. There's on each end. I think I only heard south.
The blade.
The red lettering.
The, the red.
Oh, it is. Is it on both sides? Okay. Correct, thank you. So north and south.
So you would like to amend your motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Having the amended motion second now, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion passes.
Thank you.
Onto.
We will continue letter B, which would presumably be some additional investigation on some lettering for the above fascia of the building. For the next meeting in July.
Which could be historical records from the applicant and/or contemporaneous examples from other environments that highlight the kind of structure that you guys are trying to highlight.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, really appalling in a motion.
Yeah.
It's a separate motion.
I was, I was uh.
Yeah, I, I don't think you actually said, I'm making a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I am making a motion for the same applicant as letter B.
Okay.
To review the documentation of the final submission for the facade lettering, continuing that to the next meeting, which is in July.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, great. Having a motion in a second, any further discussion? Applicant, do you have any further questions on that?
No, can we just work directly?
Absolutely. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension, motion passes.
Thank you guys.
I think it's, you'll come back with a stronger case.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to case number nine, fifteen fifty-one Bryden Road. You can each raise your right hands. Do you each further tell the truth in your testimony for the commission this evening? If you could each state your full name and association with the property for record.
Uh, my name is Isabel Francis Bongay and I am one of grant writers and project organizers.
Okay.
And I'm Jeff Collins. I'm the owner of Eighty-three Gallery and we're actually the physical agent on this project.
Okay, great. Have a seat. Jacqueline.
Okay, this application for fifteen fifty-one Bryden Road is proposing murals, so to install two painted murals. One mural would be on the brick dumpster enclosure and then the other mural would be on the concrete wall at the west side of the building. The murals that would be installed would be a collaborative paint by numbers with local artists and community members. And there's also site work proposed to install a pollinator garden. Um, in addition to plantings, the pollinator garden would include wood chip mulch, path benches, birdhouses and an informational sign. Uh, so we have the background for just the fifteen fifty-one Bryden Road building, which we've seen before for some other applications. But just to recap, it was um, early twentieth century building that then went under significant renovations in the late nineteen fifties. So what we see today is the nineteen fifties update. Um, at the June business meeting, the commission noted that the brick trash enclosure and concrete wall looked to have been incorporated and intended to match the building as part of the building design. Um, the commission noted that the guidelines do prohibit painting unpainted masonry and to avoid conflicting with the guidelines and city code and setting the precedent. The commission noted that they could support removable murals at these locations, such as a wheat paste or rice mural or heat applied wraps. Uh, it noted if the applicant wanted to use heat applied wrap but still have the volunteer participation, it may be, they may be able to have a mural added to a non-masonry area and then copying the design to a heat applied wrap that could then be applied to the masonry. The commission notes that they understand the proposal for and can support the pollinator garden and can move the pollinator garden portion to staff approval. The staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application COA two-five-zero-five-five-seven at fifty fifty-one to fifteen fifty-five Bryden Road in the Bryden Road historic district with the following conditions. And that is that removable mural material is used or that the murals are applied to non-masonry areas. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code three-one-one-six-point-eleven stands for alteration. Specifically numbers one, two, four, five, six, nine, ten, eleven and twelve. And then the city code three-one-one-six-point-one-three standards for site improvements, specifically letter A. And then the guidelines regarding masonry and painting, and then the short north design guidelines, which the H R C adopted for murals and signage throughout. Um, and those guidelines for murals, and then also they have the definitions for some items such as a party wall. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to add anything uh, before we open it to the commission?
Uh, yes, I, I would. We don't have the budget for um, heat applied wraps. Um, and I don't think that there are any areas that are not masonry. I also, I do want to point out that I think that the um, the dumpster wall is on an area of the property that's not listed. It's the addition that was built in the seventies. And that's the area that it is adjacent to. We also do have um, some letters of support from the Columbus Landmarks Foundation, the Franklin Park Civic Association. Um, and St. Vincent's or not. Um, and I was, I think one of our goals here today is to see if we can find a way to work around some of these guidelines to make the mural work. We've been doing the design sort of in collaboration with several members of the community already, so you can see there's work of several artists mixed together in this. And we're trying to find a way to honor the work that they've already put into um, designing this mural.
I, I want to go on record that I think the commission will agree as a whole. We laud the effort, we love the idea. What we can't do is set precedent for the real issue is the painting of the brick itself. And that is the biggest issue. And although, um, and we can get clarification from staff, but I'm pretty sure that the, the two walls that were looked at, of the dumpster enclosure and the, the sidewall are part of the listing itself. And would be considered now part of the fabric is while we love the efforts you're making, the community efforts, everything, like we don't object to that. We have to rule by one thing, which is the, the resources commission guidelines that are the legal documents by which we have to make all decisions. And we can't unfortunately make something that's decision, that's arbitrary or capricious or contrary to those guidelines. So um, unless there's a very exceptional, unique scenario. And so one of the things that we quite often do get are applicants that come to us and say, I'd like to paint my house. And it's even including, we've had mid-century buildings, apartment buildings in this district, only a few years different from the age of this addition. And unfortunately, we had, uh, we had some cases come through where people painted buildings without seeking approval first, where they had to go and remove that paint um, from those buildings later on. So I don't want to do anything that sets this commission up for legal exposure. Uh, and, and you know, we, we have to work within those confines and boundaries. Um, which is I think why we initially suggested some, if there's a way to engage with the community, still achieve your goals, but to help address the concerns of the code, temporary natures, temporary ways to, to apply these things that are less, a little less permanent or invasive of the historic material. Cause a nineteen seventy structure is now considered historic. And so I would look forward to other commission members giving some commentary here, but just know that we're not making a comment or come, providing any commentary on your efforts and we love what you're doing. And I want you to feel empowered by that, cause you know, it is a great thing in this neighborhood. We're just stuck to our, also to our guidelines too.
I, I understand. I'm just, I'm wondering what, what qualifies an exceptional circumstance and if there's any way we could call, we could qualify.
Unfortunately, like a, like a hardship is a hardship generally because of a financial difficulty. But in this case, the difficulty is self-imposed because you're adding this to the structure, not. It's not as if the building is falling apart because you couldn't do this work, so.
Yeah, if, if there's a financial burden such that the person would lose their house in order to do it, we don't want to put anybody, make anybody homeless, so they can submit financial documents and so forth. But that's an existing condition. Um, can you explore other avenues? You, you, you've said that the uh, that the typical solutions that we approve all the time, you see mirrors all over town. And those are all heat applied and then they're removable. What about, what about uh, building a, a different wall? Or a cube wall or, you know, out of, out of plywood, like, like a, like a ODM board on four stakes, post and calling it a sculpture? Because then you could say, this is a sculpture in our garden and that sculpture then is painted. And so you got four sheets of plywood and, and four posts. And that, I think we could look at and say, well, we've approved sculptures and items and bird baths and and how much different would that be than what we've approved in the past? We wouldn't be setting a precedent of painting an existing masonry structure. It'd be basically a sculpture, you could call it that.
So I think the difficulty on our end um, is that we also had to get the budget approved by the grant commission. So that would require going back to the um, going back to the neighborhood design collective and renegotiating some of the terms of the grant.
We make it, we make a great part of your case for that, of course.
Okay.
I'm also confident you're not the only ones to go back and renegotiate with it.
And you sound very convincing.
I do have a few other suggestions that I wanted to throw out there. So the interior of that wall is not actually brick. It's um, it's cinder, it's cinder block. Um, and that interior space is not used. How would the commission feel about painting the interior of this, of that structure versus the exterior?
The, the inside of the dumpster enclosure?
There's nothing in it.
Okay.
It's just an, it's an empty space. We could put a bench in it and it's, it's cinder block, not brick.
So it's veneered and brick, right? It's three-sided.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's three-sided.
It's, part of the other concern is, is that if you're understanding there are different types of paints and so most masonry products have the ability to breathe and to absorb moisture and let that back out and so forth. So that's part of the concern as well with the way that the guidelines are prepared to preserve the fabric of what it is that we're discussing. And creating a, a block or a membrane that would have that go otherwise, particularly there's no heat. There's a lot of elements that are exposed to that, a lot of water. That might be a little tricky.
I mean, we can, we can use masonry primer. Um, we do, we did budget for uh, to use Sharon Williams exterior paint and I do believe they have some products.
You see what I'm saying, even though it's, it's a product built for that, it's
Yes.
It's sealing up those pores in the product itself, which then traps the moisture.
Gripping the brick too much usually when it's that kind of masonry paint, as I recall.
Or the, or the block for that matter.
And the difficulty is masonry, it, it doesn't vary from cinder block to, to brick. We often have cinder block foundations on homes that are also not allowed to be painted. So if we, if we set a precedent, we say, well, we're gonna allow this cinder block to be painted, but not your cinder block to be painted. See, right now, it is, no masonry is painted unless it was previously painted outside of the period of significance. Then, then we ask that be painted, a, it was gonna be repainted, painted a uh, a typical masonry color, but this obviously has not been painted. Um. Yeah, I.
So no. Love the idea. It's a really fun idea. This is great.
So no difference on cinder block. What's your second idea or your next idea?
And by the way, I recall the wall that's further down.
Yeah.
Is definitively like a lot more connected to the architecture on this than the dumpster enclosure. I was gonna ask, Jacqueline, do we know when the, was the dumpster enclosure with the building or was that built at a later date?
I don't know for sure because they wouldn't have put that on sandboard maps. And then the one photo that we have is from the front and it's at an angle where you're not seeing down that side street. Um, so the only, I guess, information at least for staff that we have currently is just the contextual current materials and design. If it seems like it's built to match, but was it built along at the same time? Um, that's not certain.
The um, the dumpster wall is a much newer structure.
Do you know what year the dumpster structure may?
And also within like that patio that that wall's on, there's a plaque there that says sixty-seven, because it was the original Saint Anne's and then they moved on to it. So that was, it looks like it, it stopped right there and it was built sixty-seven.
Yeah, so the um, so the concrete wall along the patio would have been built in sixty-seven. Um, the dumpster wall looks to have been built in the last twenty years, but I don't know the exact date on that.
To me, the patio wall is the more important thing. By, by the way, I, I drove through here just this past week. So I kind of was, I noticed that the wall looked definitely older than the dumpster enclosure. The dumpster enclosure brick color looks slightly off compared to the building. So I wondered if there'd be any leeway on the dumpster enclosure based on it only being twenty years old rather than but that's a, again, another discussion point for the commission.
But the, that's actually why we proposed.
Well, sixty-seven.
Well beyond fifty years. That's the problem. You have to be seventy-five or later.
The, the, in the. The, the, in the listing, in the historical listing, is, is the dumpster enclosure part of that listing?
So this building is not individually listed. It's part of the broader district as far as I'm aware. So I don't think we'd have that kind of detail. And then especially when the, you know, historic age remodeling happens, I don't think they would have added that into there. It's become historic over time, but they wouldn't have included in the initial nomination or listing.
Curious to, this is a newer type of application for me. And you know, I used to live in Philadelphia for a while and they had a huge mural arts program on, and there was murals on historic structures everywhere. And it was a point of pride, you know, the community involvement and all the murals. And they were everywhere. And I'm, I'm just curious if there's any established arts programs that are run through the city that could make a recommendation? Because I, I do hear the commissioners and I don't want to, like you said, Commissioner McCabe, rule on something or give an opinion on something that's not in alignment with the guidelines. But if there are opportunities or community works, I'd be interested, but I'm not sure if anything like that exists.
I think I can speak to it just for like community works themselves or not necessarily an exception. It's more so of deciding if it's, you know, historic or not contributing or, you know, previously painted, things like that. We do have a lot of short north alliance projects that come through. Usually they come especially for Italian and Victorians, so sort of short north area and the same kind of guidelines because it's all come from the same code applied to there. We have the Italian Village Historic District and the Victorian Village Historic District. So they're still applying to make sure that if they're putting paint on something, then the guidelines or the commissions for those districts have to evaluate, okay, is this masonry previously painted? Is this going to be removable mural? And so kind of similar ways of figuring out, does this meet coding guidelines?
Okay. And then the last thing is if that, a question for the rest of the commission is if that dumpster enclosure were to be established outside of a period of significance, would we be willing to think about that being a possibility of having a mural there?
I, I think we'd, we'd have to look at it in the same terms of would we allow a demolition on it? Because that means it's going to be radically changed. So in, in looking at demolitions and stuff that were outside of the period of significance who are more likely to allow those to happen. So I think that would probably, yeah, because certainly something that was built last year would be treated differently than something that was in the period of significance. If someone put a park bench there and then they took it away, okay?
What are your thoughts on exploring other options in the sense of maybe material? I know we keep going back.
So I, I don't think heat wraps are going to happen. If we can't do the mural at all, I think that we could renegotiate with the, with the grant commission, but it would significantly change the project.
Okay. It'd help us if we broke this into two pieces. So the words with the landscape plan, we go through that.
That would be.
Way, and then we maybe table.
The landscape is already been a step. The garden part of this is off, is already.
We're just done with the two murals.
I, I was just, I was hoping we could look a little bit more closely as to whether or not that, that dumpster enclosure is, as you were saying, within, I, I think the phrasing I was looking for was within the period of historical significance because it is a much later addition. So to me, it, it seemed to make sense that there might be exceptions on that enclosure. So I would like to explore those options. And then if those are definitively not, not options that we can take, then I would go back to the grant commission and see if we can renegotiate the project. But it would change the project significantly. So I would like to see if there's any way we can get it approved first.
It's unlikely I would be in support of painting any of the masonry. Just because of the fact that it alters the ability for the masonry to keep its character and its, its fabric and allowing that to breathe and, and to release moisture and that kind of thing.
Even if it's outside of the period of significance?
It's in the district, so I'm not sure how I would even chop that up.
Yeah, I, I don't, I guess the, the thing that I would worry about is, is how we justify the rationale for the painting of it. So as not to create precedent for the next person that has, you know, an addition on a house, let's say, and, and they say, well, it's, you know, 20 years old or 15 years old, I now want to paint that. And, and.
Some multiple reasons.
Or a brand new addition.
And I, and I cannot see the hardship being, you know, I understand you have a hardship with a grant, but that's different than a hardship for the case for us to say, aha, there's a life safety issue or there's something here that is a little.
How about this even? What if we were to continue this and you go back to the beautiful minds that you worked with to get the grant and say, we're having some difficulties and explain some of this? Maybe they'll give you the right answer. Maybe they'll say, oh, well, we may be able to massage this and give you a little more of the budget to create, you know, a art structure or a four-sided piece that's going to be established. I'm not sure, but maybe they have some really good insight too.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you could, you could even do cutouts with ODM board or something and make them even more interesting in some ways perhaps. At, at least I would be open to that. Would the rest of the commission be open to?
I mean, I, I would, I would be open to even entertaining things like, you know, could you take the murals and paint them onto like, you know, so there's cement fiber panel that you can get in four by eight panel or even larger sometimes? And could you then install that where they're then, you know, connected to over the top of the masonry, but screwed in only at the, at the, at the mortar joints?
Oh, yeah.
And then that way it, it can be removed off. It's within the joint. That's actually within our guideline. It's kind of like when you put a, when we put a sign.
Do you know how much those panels cost?
They're fairly economical.
Fifty bucks?
Probably somewhere in that range. It's, you know.
Prices have been going up, so it's hard to remember.
I don't want to quote prices, but it's.
I remember what they were, nine dollars.
Right. But. And, and quite often we, you know, I'm just trying to find a way that would help get you there to achieve what you want and help meet our code.
I like that too, because you can take it inside, paint it there. You can trade it out for another, for another element later on. You can build a frame around the, the enclosure, you know, on all four sides and do even more interesting stuff. So.
Yeah, and you can check prices at Home Depot.
Yeah, we, we can endorse a manufacturer, but if, you know, James Hardy has a whole line of cement fiber products and you can look up cement siding products and it's just a large sheet good. It's almost like plywood, but made out of cement. It's just material and it, it's paintable. It comes primed even already. So maybe, you know, if you're not buying the primer, you could be buying it pre-primed and maybe there's a savings for you. I don't know. But I'm, I'm just trying to throw out some ideas to help get you there and help us get there with you.
Right, and if you go that route, they have to be attached in more, in the mortar joint only. So when you do the application, make sure you mention that.
We would look at those options. I mean, like I said, we could continue it, give you, give you an opportunity to maybe consider those options, reach back out to those folks.
All right.
We may have a really good idea that.
I think none of us object to the idea of the content, what you're doing.
We celebrate. We think it's great.
Just how do we get you there that rest of the way?
Okay.
And, and not create our own legal conundrum, I think.
Okay, for COA 2500557, 1551 Bryden Road, I'd like to continue this to the July commission meeting.
So again.
Having a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion pass.
Thank you for coming in.
Just continue to work with staff, keep a fluid dialogue going on. Hopefully we get there.
Thank you.
We, we love where you're going with it though. Case number 10 was moved to staff approval, going on to case number 11, 1091 South High Street.
I do have an update for this one. The applicant reached out today and let us know that they couldn't make for number 11 the, that 1091 application. So they asked if that could be continued to the July hearing.
I move to continue.
Who's the second? Mike, Mike is the second. I having a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstention, motion passes on to case number 12. I guess case number 12 would also be.
Right.
Somebody want to continue that?
Oh, there's a separate applicant.
Uh huh, okay. So case number 12, 1091 South High Street. If you could both raise your right hands, do you swear the tell the truth in, in your testimony before the commission this evening? If you could state your full name and association with the property for record?
Yeah, I'm Roger Kessler with Kessler Sign Company, working with Inglefield Oil.
Okay.
I'm Steve Sedwell, Director of Construction for Inglefield.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, Jacqueline.
Okay, this application is for 1091 South High Street. The proposal includes new signage and that would involve removing the current 32 square foot sign and an 18 square foot sign that are at the front south elevation of the gas station convenience store building. And then installing a new 28 square foot sign at the front or south elevation of that building. Letters would be internally illuminated with channel letters. The logo portion of the sign to be internally illuminated with face illumination and then the letters would read Duchess. The signage would also include two new PVC signs to be pin mounted to the front awning. So the sign would be reading founded in Ohio, 1961. And that would be 2.45 square foot in size. And then also be reading cold beer, deli subs, fresh grab and grow to go. And that would be 5.91 square feet. The application also includes exterior alterations, so replacing brick veneer on the primary elevation with new brick veneer. And that is proposed to have a French manor appearance or a blend of white cream or dark brick finish. And then to paint the brick veneer, the existing brick veneer on the side and rear elevations of the main building, as well as the brick dumpster screen walls and be took white. And then to install, remove existing light fixtures, install new, five new gooseneck light fixtures at that front or south elevation. So this property consists of a gas station, including two fuel pump areas sheltered by canopies and a convenience store built in approximately 1985. The most recent approval that we have regarding signage is from 2008 from the Bury District Commission. At the business meeting, the June business meeting, the commission noted that the existing thin brick looks to be in rough condition. The commission asked about the brick banding and shadow lines detailing noted that they can discuss further at the hearing. The commission recommended that all of the signage proposed building canopy site be included in one comprehensive package. And the commission noted that they can discuss the signage further at the hearing. So staff notes to avoid or recommend avoid historicizing or implementing alterations that seek to create an earlier appearance with no historic basis, such as a whitewashed or faded paint appearance. In general, staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application COA 250554 at 1091 South High Street in the Bury District with the following conditions. And that's that the building signage illumination meets guidelines and that the thin brick veneer that is deteriorated is replaced with unpainted thin brick and a cut sheet for that submitted to staff for final approval. And one thing I want to note is the signage had previously been proposed, I think to be 32 square feet. So the applicant has reduced the size to 28 square feet. Our guidelines typically say that wall signs, the maximum size is 25 square feet. So, so possible discussion there. And then overall, the recommendation here is based on the CD code 3116.11 standards for alteration, specifically numbers three, nine, 11, and 12. And then the CD code 3116.13 standards for side improvements, specifically letter C. And then the short north design guidelines regarding signage and then the HRC guidelines also regarding signage, masonry and painting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything the applicant would like to add before we open this up for commission discussion?
No, we do have a sample of the brick veneer for the front. If you want to see it.
Sure. And we, yeah, we will allow you to approach with those items.
Okay. Be real careful, there's lots of stuff going on there.
There are photos of what our new brand new stores look like. And I know not all of our old stores are anywhere, you know, modern like this. So we are trying to blend our sites in together. We're remodeling all of our, our old sites that are not tearing down or rebuilding. This is an example here. Of course, this is another style. We were actually going these styles and Gehenna players within the design committee or design area, Stringtown Road, there's like 10 of these sites here that we were doing. So we're just trying to get the, the same type of brick and paint skin. Here's the French manor that we're using.
It's the proposed.
Yes.
New skin, okay.
And this here is the paint color that we are.
For the existing.
The existing side.
East and west. Or the, let's see, the west and the rear? North? Okay.
The rear, of course, if you can even see it.
That's what I was going to say.
It's, it's the, the two sides.
So east and west.
Yes.
There's no paint currently on the west or the east, I'm sorry. Correct, but there is paint on the west. No?
There's not. There's no, there's no paint.
It's the same discussion. Different, different context.
Yeah.
She, on the front of the building is, there are, we did send the pictures and the brick is deteriorating back. It needs a total replacement.
And that's just thin brick? Yeah, which is, I, I can tell you, this is, this is, this is, yeah, this is ready to be scraped off.
Yeah. Scrap it out with that.
The side, you can see there where they have repaired some. It is more of a minor repair with, with a coat of paint. It would totally cover that up. On these sites, we have been trying to paint the whole thing. And of course, you know, you always have a little bit of fluff in the budget and our fluff is out the window now with the brick of the whole front.
So you have.
That's why we're asking to paint the sides and not work the whole thing because that's.
What are the, yeah, what are the extents? When you say the front, how, how, because there's, it's not, not a straight corner. It's like, you know, there's some curves and transitions. That's a good point.
Everything you see here and then wrapped around to the side. On the left hand side, it would come out three feet or so. That whole column is re-studied.
That's all new, new brick?
Yes.
That, that curved element?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and explain to me, it wasn't clear completely on the application. Is that rounded profile still retained then in the new bricking?
Yes.
And is the kind of those bands still occurring or is that?
No, that will go away. It'll just be straightforward to break.
Okay, and then as it, so as I see the corners though, and this thing rounds, I know it's the brick, by the way, changes direction on both the left-hand side, right?
Well, they do one, I guess, one.
So here it changes direction. It runs this way, the brick?
They go to a soldier.
Yeah, and then going around the corner, go back to that other photo right there. It, it runs up and down here. Is that, that?
That is because of the sharp.
So that would still happen again?
So you can mirror that detail? Okay.
I mean, it probably was. Clyde just raised the point, architecturally probably it'd look better if you did it all running up and down because it would be like, I don't know, that round profile.
It's a big enough of those points hanging out there when it's a brick.
I guess, I guess what the first issue we need to decide on is, is thin set? Is that masonry or is it not masonry? Because if it's masonry.
It's like tile, right?
We can't paint it.
Same thing we just discussed.
It, but, but is it, is it a masonry product or is it?
I mean, I think the Brick Institute defines it as brick still.
Okay.
Systems for it.
Okay, well then it's masonry. We're kind of stuck with that.
It has a mortar joint.
I guess so. I mean, where is the contact paper?
What's below the brick? On the back, the sides.
That's block.
Block.
Cinder block.
Yes.
That was painted probably previously.
To your point, Clyde.
I do not have pictures of that, so I can't discern.
Okay.
Curious the backups. One of the big things about brick is.
Curious the backups. One of the big things about brick is you have the cavity that's behind it typically. And then you have wee poles and you want the brick to breathe. And that's, that's how it operates. And once you cover it up, you don't allow for that breathing and you have a system that fails. The thin set though, is that the same system and at the same?
Right.
So, so I, that's the part where I understand your point. I don't know if it affects anything how we think about it, but.
Let me ask a question. What's precedent on this?
This isn't the first historical consideration of thin brick we've ever had.
No, I mean, have, have other commissions dealt with this or have we dealt with this before?
So I don't have anything that comes to mind. I think brick veneer, whether you know, this brick veneer applies or not, can sometimes also be susceptible to the or, you know, moisture being trapped with paint. As far as this brick, I'm not sure, you know, it's not a historic material. So it's up to the commission, I think, in that discussion. And I don't know if we need more information or not about how this particular brick will behave if painted, if it has similar functionality issues, if moisture is trapped or not, or if it doesn't affect it.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's more the point of if, if it's a masonry product, we need to be consistent. Regardless of whether or not because someone could come along and say, well, I've got some paint that breathes. It's not going to be detrimental to the brick. And, and so I can paint my 1890s house.
I'm on board. I also want to point out that this is the southern border of the brewery district.
Is, is this the very last structure in the?
It is. It is a gigantic, you know, come into the district, see this. Yes, you should be getting a sense of what's going to be happening in this very quirky district. And therefore it has a more important pride of place than other buildings in the district itself.
Well, the issue that we're running into is.
Thank you.
One, we can't find brick to replace it to match.
Clearly. Yeah.
Two, it is not in the budget to redo the whole building with new brick. Therefore, it's going to be more of an eyesore with just repairs being done to them.
I, I will, I will, you know.
Your frown said it all.
It's, it's one of the challenges is that what we would have to say to those sort of things are you have to watch, you know, admitting sort of neglect is a fine line, you know, or intend to neglect a fine line in our code. But then also additionally hardship in a case for hardship includes, you know, a list of things you've done to avoid the hardship. And you may run into some challenges trying to meet any of the hardship criteria for exception. There's this item, but also, you know, let, let's talk about the rest of the package still we've got here too. You know, you still have a sign that exceeds the 25 square feet.
But we appreciate you coming down.
You have come down some. There's a counterpart application, you know, I know that's being tabled, but is that not also for more signage?
I don't believe it is. It's a replacement of existing.
Of a ground sign. Correct.
To ground signs.
I think there's some flags perhaps under the canopy and a few other things.
My question also comes up is, is overall though, what is allowed by code today? You know, once you go to alter a historic, a building in a district, we can do like for like replacement, but this is not like for like this is, this is complete replacement. You're taking it all away and putting back something different. That has a different logo, a different look, a different feel. So the moment you're coming back and putting different look, different feel, different everything else, you're, you're demolishing it and putting something up new. I think we have to know what, how many signs would this building be permitted?
We're not saying any more signs on the building whatsoever.
Well, despite what you have there right now, though, you are, you know, there's a complimentary application to this scenario, to this, to this address that's proposing taking a ground sign out and completely replacing us. If you want to propose taking that ground sign out, eventually, you know, that, that may be something to consider the allowance on the increase here. I think, I think this commission sort of is struggling because you've got this thing broken out on the signage a little bit. And that, that is an issue, even though we've now tabled that other component.
And I think it's the site. It's not just the building.
Yeah, we can't, you know, whole, right.
The whole corner.
Okay. Well, let's talk about if you don't mind. Are you okay with this thin brick that we're showing you? This is the way it's made. It's not painted. It's the way it's made. You understand that?
That, that brick I have no issue with because of it's a new material. I do see the brick failing, but that's just, I'm just one, one.
I mean, does the rest of the people, you okay with it?
I don't have a problem with it because it's a similar product. You're reapplying it the same fashion.
Right. It's, it's a different color, but.
This product in more in that color you testified to. So there's no match to that.
What, what color would be the brown or the mortar?
The grau.
It'll be gray.
Gray.
So I wouldn't necessarily have issue with that.
Okay. One of the things to look at is does that relate to an earlier period? But I think if it's applied to a more contemporary building, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
But I have to say that I'm much less supportive because of the French dimension of it. It's not, it's not close to any of the other things in the brewery district. So it doesn't to me announce the brewery district. Having said that, I understand all the points we've made.
Yeah.
Would not be my first choice.
Opportunity in the sense of the material and the function and that sort of thing.
It would not be my first choice.
Well, most people seeing that brick would not relate to it in that context of a gas station as being a French chateau. It would just look at it as a gray brick. There's a gray veneer.
Yeah.
So and then you're, are you okay with taking down that orange and yellow band that goes across the canopy and getting rid of that, then putting up something a little modern or more tastefully done than with the black awning and.
I think the issue is the signage on the band.
Well, last, last time we were here, they were okay with that.
Well, we didn't know there was a full package on the entire parcel. So I think that alters some of the thought. I'll just hang in here for a minute. This is definitely an improvement.
And then we are eliminating the sign, signing to the left hand side.
Also definite improvement.
Yeah.
So for, you know, again, each commission member may feel different.
Right.
I don't mind the taking of removal of the yellow eyebrow, if you will, and putting in the that's black eyebrow that's founded in Ohio, I think, and it, you know, it's got some products on it. I don't feel like that advertises the name of the business. I'm okay with that. It's not, maybe it's sort of in my mind, a little bit of a roadway automotive version of what we see on awnings in a pedestrian setting where it might say, you know, steaks, fine seafood, that kind of thing.
I feel like in the past, it's counted toward the total signage. So I'm less supportive of that. I'm very supportive of getting rid of the band and replacing it with the black. I think that's much better. And also the lamps. My issue is the signage.
Okay.
Well, I, I'd love to just hear.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, Clyde.
I don't dislike the design or anything in any way. It's just the square footage issue. And like the others are saying, we're, we're just over, right? And so hard to be supportive of. That's a hard number and I, I don't know if there's any other route that we can go to look at it differently.
Would, would there be an ability for the applicant to consider a design that took the, the Duchess component down to the 25 square feet?
If I keep squeezing it, yes. The problem is it just becomes out of proportion to the rest of the building. And we're trying to. We really have worked on it hard.
You have, and I appreciate it for sure. It's getting, I think we're much closer than we were. So I think we're there. We just, a couple of little tweaks, particularly, you know, you know, you have some challenges with the other brick. I mean, there's a lot going on with this building. So certainly we can hopefully work in a way to accommodate. And removing the larger sign at pedestrian level is a big advantage. I mean, you're removing some large signage that gives you some, some grace there. How important are those things on the end of the canopy, the year and all that business?
That's, that's really part of our branding and it just makes the building look balanced and clean. The, the, the founding, that could almost be written as a cornerstone, I guess.
I'm okay with the founding, actually.
You know, that, that rather than signage, I mean, one could imagine that that's similar to a cornerstone that we don't count as signage.
Are you okay with the words cold beer, deli subs, fresh grabbing?
That's a little bit more difficult. I'll have to try and convince. Well, it's more like steak chops and all those other things you see in a typical steakhouse. Yeah, but we don't, we count that as signage, like on the awnings and things. And if they, if they have their, if they have their sign on their, on their awning, then they can't have it on their blade. And, and so we, we take that into account.
If you didn't have it, would people think you didn't have cold drinks and so forth? Or they know you got fuel because they can see the pumps, but I know that's branding. I'm just curious if that, does that really improve the marketing visibility and, and draw to customers?
Well, does it sell another sub? Probably not.
Okay.
But is it making people more aware of what's going on in the, in the facility? I think absolutely.
Okay.
And it's part of the branding. That's, you know, like McDonald's, they have, I don't know, 28 different logos before you get in the building. Somewhere hanging around, whether it be the directions or blah, blah, blah. But anyway.
Some McDonald's do.
Some McDonald's have to have their arches in green at particular cities because the building code. Yeah, I, I've, I've got, I do about 4,000 McDonald's. I know. Yeah. I know her well. Yeah. You know, so even McDonald's is, has to go with the local code.
If it's helpful for the commission, as far as precedent, I know the commission has had some examples of signage that have been slightly larger if they are in proportion to the building. So that could be whether or not you agree that the signage is in proportion to the building. The other component is the site itself. So this is probably not a contender for a contributing site or building. So could be some leeway there just to help in factor in the discussion.
And we did on the hotel allow for a larger sign in proportion to the building. So I think that's a valid argument. I think we've also sometimes looked at the logo as
art.
As art.
The B.
Usually when it's independent, like in a fence, wrought iron motif or something. What, what do you think about the proportions of the building? I mean, it's, it, it doesn't look particularly large on that building.
I agree.
My, my theory still is, is by the time you've gotten here, you've already seen the pumps. You've seen the logo, you know, you, you see the logo, even if the Duchess were down to the 25 square feet. And though it be tabled right now, there's another sign out on the ground sign out on the corner that brought them in too.
I have a little more concern of that, but.
Yeah.
And I know that's not yours, but.
It, it, it is, but it isn't, but it is. That makes sense.
Not yet.
So I, I, I will squeeze the Duchess in the, in the, in the logo. And we'll get the 25 square feet. It, it'll look a little. What's the right word? Odd, but that's okay. Because I do appreciate where you guys are coming from. But we really need the, the wording on, on the awning to make it look balanced. And the founding in 1961. You probably didn't know Mr. Inglefield, but he was one of the most manmade men in the world. And a peach of a guy and gave and gave and gave and gave. Probably more stuff than I don't even know about. But anyway, that said, I think what doing the brick front is going to be really, really, when it's done, you guys are all going to love it. You say, wow, we're an approved. Now, the sides, we don't have. We, I guess, might as well address the elephant in the room. We don't have any good ideas other than to paint it, to make it part of the brand, unless you guys have another idea.
Paint what sign? The sides.
I, I, I might be in the minority here, but I would be willing for this commission to consider painting of the thin brick sides as a test case scenario, simply because I'm very curious how the paint is going to hold up.
Well, it's veneer.
On the thin brick itself, because what you raise up is, is the system, the cavity system isn't present anymore and the whole idea of the brick breathing is just different. I mean, it's, there's, there's a waterproof membrane and it's adhered to everything. It's this, I mean, the building system itself is just completely different. And, and our rationale for usually painting the brick is because of breathability and other issues and my.
Well, and the flip side is when it fails in three years, because it can't breathe, then they're going to have to do something with it. Well, maybe that's a new budget and a new day, but it's possible.
We, it, you know, speaking of McDonald's, oh, we did.
Don't make me hungry.
A hundred or 500 or 800. I forget how many different stores. And we painted all their brick and really have not had any issues. But I visit all the stores.
So, so part of, part of my curiosity on this is, is goes back to the thin brick on the face of this building failed in a very relatively short amount of time. Will ultimately the painting of the sides, which is also thin brick, actually continue its value or it's going to have to come down anyways? Or will it actually preserve it in the opposite method? It's a system we've just not actually encountered in preservation much.
What was the tile? The other argument is we're allowing them to cover the front or maybe allowing them to cover the front veneer brick with a new veneer brick. Correct. Would we have allowed them to cover the sides with a new veneer brick? And how much different is that than a paint? I mean, I mean, a veneer brick or a texture paint or a paint, I mean, where's the, where's the line that you cross?
They're going to be removing the existing veneering on the front. You're not going over top of them.
Oh, no. No.
No. I mean, it's coming off.
Yeah, right. It's coming off. It's falling off. And it's being replaced with something different. Which I guess we would.
Different how? Different than what's there?
Yeah, different brick. I mean, a different veneer.
Similar material though.
Right. But it's not going to physically get the same stuff.
It'll be a new system used like this here. They put it over top of the phone. This, and the new system actually has a metal frame to it.
Okay.
And it connects to.
A panel.
It's been tried and tried.
The panelized stuff, yeah.
But, but normally we wouldn't allow, let's say a German village house to take off their front brick and replace it with something else.
True, but.
So.
How many of those are have, they have laminate brick? This.
I, I just think, I think we're.
I'm going the case that this may be different.
I, I'm building, this, this is like a, a building that's, that's actually built of sort of a more disposable system in the first place.
Right.
It, I think we have to sort of view this thing wildly.
Temporarily sort of material. It's not a.
Yeah, this is a hundred year material.
And we're only going to run, as far as setting a precedent, we're only going to run into these thin veneer bricks in recent buildings. We're not going to run into them in an 1890s house. We're not going to run into a 1930s.
Is there a problem with this?
With what?
You sort of have some concern, you know?
Well, I, I want to be really careful how we set the precedence on this so that we don't end up. But I'm going to be painted masonry.
I, I think it's painted.
It's a brick brick.
But this is not a, I think the system difference is the issue. So when we say.
It's an applied masonry system.
When we offer justification of why we have potentially, somebody may vote a certain way.
Right.
Or support a certain action. I think this, the building system itself is not traditional.
Okay.
Construction of the 19th or 20th century like we've seen.
I wonder if they really thought the building would last this long. You know, honestly, I thought maybe, you know, they're like, hey, let's give this another round. We got another 20 years.
Well, BP built the building. Okay. For print and who knows what they're.
It's blocked. It's an old building. It's, you know, so maybe there's something about to consider, but anyway.
As, as long as we can set the precedent very nearly, very carefully.
That's why I'm also saying test case too.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Painting elevation.
Okay.
I, I don't know that I could find, like, I, I actually did do a little bit of research before the meeting, seeing, you know, seeing this on the agenda again. I can't find anything in the way of guidance for preservation of thin brick yet. So this is.
I just find it hard to believe that nobody else has faced this in any other commission.
It's possible. I just don't have a recollection of it.
And you can't remember everything, I know. So, you know, we can on YouTube.
I, I, I can't remember it being.
In this group.
In this group.
This group.
I think I'm all right. I, I understand the test case of the nature of this material is vastly different than a typical brick system that we're normally commenting on. So it seems like a different animal, things falling apart. So, um, it, it's just a different case altogether. So I think that's fine. So if we can make a motion on that, but there's also still, we haven't resolved the signage on the brow. That's the final thing.
He, he's willing to come down to 25 on the other thing. So that, that covers that. We've kind of agreed on the brick.
No, it doesn't cover that with this. I don't think the signage on the brow was included in.
No, no, no. So the size of the brow is the only thing we have left.
You're speaking to the number of signs or the size or what?
I don't feel comfortable just ma- making a judgment without the other application on the sign in.
Why don't we do this? Why, why don't we do an A and a B? We'll prove everything except for the signage on the, on the brow. And then when the other peg you to submit it, then we'll have a better idea. That, because the signage on the brow is something that'll be added at the very end. And that way you could move ahead with it.
Yeah, we'd like to get something started.
Yeah.
Months.
Right. You got one little thing out there dangling that is a guy with a paintbrush later.
Yeah.
So, so you're saying you, you would be willing to potentially entertain or suggest a motion that includes the Duchess, the main Duchess sign. As the applicant suggested, they would amend that down to 25.
Though it's.
You would support the brow, but the brow would have no approval for lettering on it yet.
Correct.
Okay, just to be clear.
Correct. And we do the brick and, and they could get moving and they got one little thing dangling that worst case, they don't get it, but at least you, you got everything.
We got enough to get going and, and we're, we're not real, um, I'm not real sure what the other folks are presenting, but I will find out tomorrow morning. Bet your bottom dollar on that.
Okay, it's pretty extraordinary.
I'll make a motion here. Um, unless there's any other discussion, we good?
I actually want to go on record saying that I find it regrettable. I think you're missing an opportunity to really highlight this great historic district. I speak for the brewery district all the time because I really care about it. And I think that it could be a distinguishing factor for your, uh, installation. And I, I, I wish that we could be having that conversation instead of the conversation about your brand. I get how important brand is. Don't get me wrong. I just think that it's an equally important thing to celebrate. And I feel like we haven't even paid any attention to that whatsoever. So that's an on the record comment for me.
Okay.
Uh, regarding COA 25005541091 South High Street. Like to make a motion to approve with the following, following qualifications. The brick on the front approved as presented, the brick on the sides to be painted as presented as a test case.
I prefer that you not say brick, but you say brick veneer.
Brick veneer, applied brick veneer system, then then set brick be painted and the commission review that and see how that condition works over the years. Since this is distinctly different than a typical historical brick application with a cavity wall. Approve the main Duchess sign with the caveat or change that the sign will be 25 square foot. And, uh, we will approve the brow without the lettering. And the lettering will be assessed at a future date when we look at the rest of the package, signage package on the site.
Good.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, having a motion in a second. Um, I just want to clarify or highlight two things just for, again, for record. The treatment of the side walls might confirm that it is really, it's a test case scenario only. Uh, in the scenario, and it's really our grappling with this thin set system. Uh, and then, um, secondarily, the sign, the main Duchess sign, uh, the applicant will have to submit a revised drawing to staff and staff would then approve that consistent with the 25 foot limitation. Is that correct?
Yes, agreed.
Okay, with the signature. Okay, great. Any questions or concerns? Jack.
Just two, two points of clarification. Is, are the lights also included part of the motion or is, okay. And then, uh, is part of the rationale also due to the building or site, um, being a non-contributing structure? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what I would ask is that the, the motion be amended to reflect those two things real quick.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, motion and second are, are both agreed. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
And I'll get those drawings.
And then, uh, actually for record, there, you not have to have a part B to then continue.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
The lettering on the eyebrow.
Yes.
Just for official purposes.
Okay.
Anybody can make that motion.
I make a motion, we continue part B, the lettering on the eyebrow.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I have to amend the motion to be included with the other signage application, considered with the other signage application.
Yes, we can do that.
Uh, legally, we would probably have to have Jacqueline confirm that with the other applicant first, that they could tag along and move from one application to the other. Since they're not the same applicant.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just thinking if we need to continue it. In that case, if the applicant feels that the other applicant would be fine with, uh, just adding that to their application scope.
Okay, motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, moving on to case number 13617619 Oakwood Avenue. If you could each, if you could each stay standing and raise your right hands, do you each try to tell the truth in your testimony before, before the commission this evening?
Yes.
If you could each state your full name and association with the property for record.
Uh, Brent Otzen, and we're the contractor for the property for the porch.
Okay.
Don Lewis Costello, subpoena 480091963, Council of Landers.
Okay, thank you. See, Jack.
Okay, this application for 617619 Oakwood Avenue was continued from the April HRC hearing. Um, and then the commission had continued the application to give the applicant time to, um, provide some additional information and revised materials, which the applicant has submitted. Um, and then another update for this property, the, um, property is in receivership. So there was, um, a separate applicant who had applied to demo the collapsed wood portions of the porch. Um, and then because of their collapse date and an unsafe building order, approval was, um, yeah, the, that application for the other applicant was approved to demo the wood portions. Now, we did receive notice yesterday that a portion of one of the brick columns was also taken down without approval by the other applicant. Um, the bricks are being stored on site and then we'll follow up with the applicant, the other applicant, so that they'll get something submitted for rebuilding of that brick column. Um, so just that background there. The applicant has also provided, um, some updates and then a suggestion from staff to shade some of the areas. Um, so we have a better idea of the spaces and the openings. Um, I know there was a, a point of concern or questions, uh, from the commission from the prior hearings. Um, so those have been submitted. So overall, um, the proposal is to rebuild the porch and using the historic photo showing what the historic porch looked like as, um, the inspiration. One of the changes that we haven't seen before is that post in the center, such as something that might be there for discussion. Overall, the staff recommendation is to recommend approval of application COA 2500244 at 617619 Oakwood Avenue in the Old Oaks Historic District with the following conditions. And that's just that we have clarification on whether the porch will be affixed via mortar joints and existing openings. And that's to avoid damaging the, um, masonry. The basis for the staff recommendation is the city code 3116.11 standards for alteration, specifically numbers four, five, six, 11 and 12, and then the guidelines regarding porches and stoops. Thank you.
Great. Uh, is there anything the applicant would like to add? And specifically, if you could just address, the staff does have a clarification item they would love to have clarified. That was just read off.
Regarding the shading, sir?
No, no, the, the last condition, if you want to repeat.
The mortar joints?
Yep.
Correct.
Yes, it's my understanding that we're gonna do our best to use the existing slots.
Okay.
Yeah, which is not visible currently because the porch is obviously mounted. So we haven't seen the demo porch yet.
And, you know, the drawings that get revised per our discussions or recommendations all along, so. I mean, I, if you're gonna follow these plans tonight, I don't.
Did we say the center column? Did we say yes to the center column? I don't remember that.
It, it's, it's.
You haven't seen the center column yet, so that might.
Yeah, it's new.
So the center column of the railing there.
Yeah.
Which is pretty standard. Um, uh, also for things like code is you can only go typically so many feet without having some kind of a support because we, there's no way to run a railing that entire length and have it be stable. And especially if somebody were to lean on it, you, you could basically push right through. And obviously it couldn't be pictured in.
It's, yeah, it's, it's fine. The 1957 photograph.
Yeah.
Doesn't show one way or the other.
Right.
So I think we could assume it was probably there because he's right. The distances.
Get fall through.
Are really.
Even 57?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think even in 57, you'd get a piece of lumber that long.
Okay.
No, so there's a span. The other question was, um, of the more recent photos where somebody had obviously updated it with a almost screen door look. Metal panels around, which was very inappropriate and, uh, and some kind of another steel beam.
Right.
Was gonna be removed. Yeah, so that's definitely wasn't approved by historic.
Right, exactly. I, I, I think you got it. I, I.
Yeah, the drawings are really improved.
Yep. Should, should we just?
Yeah.
You ready?
Yeah.
Who, who wants to do it?
What's the, uh, what's the overhang? One foot? So we're still at one.
One, one foot four.
Yeah, on the, um, you mean like the soffit area to wrap up that roofline? Yeah. Okay, so the drawing. Mostest that we could get from what was, uh, picture, what's currently existing. Five doesn't match that, but that's, I was just curious. H5. So I think it's still at one foot.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I move to approves, uh, uh, C0825002. The address isn't shown. Here it is. Whatever the address is, I can't.
17619 Oakwood.
Yes. As submitted.
Second. Okay, having a motion in a second. Any further discussion, clarification required? Carrying none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy.
There you go.
Finally, finally it was.
I mean, the, these nine of the drawings were, were good.
Thank you, sir.
Lot of work.
And let me just say while I'm under oath, when these gentlemen are finished, it's gonna look unbelievable.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Is there gonna be a center column? So we just need to make sure that that's all.
On.
I saw there last.
It's not a column.
Yeah.
It's.
This is the old.
Thanks.
Look, look, no, they were showing.
Correct.
I thought.
Or.
Okay.
I think it's a drawing. Yeah, I think there's too many variables.
Is it, is the, in the drawing that you submitted, did it have the column in the middle on the railing?
Yeah, it should be, but they just pulled it out.
It, it, okay, I, I thought I saw it up there, but I didn't see it. I didn't see it in the package. For some reason, we must be looking at it something different.
I think one of the first ones that didn't have it.
There we go.
Didn't have it.
It's been it like four or five different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought I saw it up there. There, there it is.
Correct one.
That's the one I was thinking of. Okay, good. It's there.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure so that when you get a building permit.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, on to case number 141036 South Front Street. If you could each raise your right hand, so you each try to tell the truth in your testimony for commission this evening.
I do.
State your full name and association with the property for record.
Craig Moncrief, attorney for the applicant.
Uh, David Maleka, architect.
Thank you. Jack.
This application for 1036 South Front Street is a conceptual application, which includes demolition of the Swiss Chalet building and then new construction of a six-story apartment building. Uh, and with some materials included there. Um, I know we've had a number of discussions previously about the existing building. And, um, if we, if the applicant, I think, would like some clarification on where the commission would fall pending, you know, a future final submission, we could potentially give like a straw kind of verbal confirmation on where each commissioner is. So they have an idea of whether the commission as a whole or, you know, mixed or not, would support that or not. Um, otherwise.
Question, Jacqueline.
Correct, yes. Yeah. Um, otherwise, staff would recommend that the commission focus their discussion on the proposed massing, um, and just how that, if this meeting city code or not, uh, and that would be, you know, 3116112. There are, um, a couple of city code letters here that deals specifically with massing. So I've just pulled that out in the staff report to kind of make it easier to reference. So A, C, F, K and M for city code from, for new construction. Um, and then overall, you know, we've had a lot of good discussion about this property conceptually before. So I just recommend to focus on that conceptual discussion. Um, so it's kind of skipping over some of the past staff, um, staff report things for brevity here. And I'll just kind of jump forward to the, this being a conceptual application. So no action is required. Um, and we just recommend that the commission provide feedback so the applicant can refine their proposal for a future meeting. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to add anything at this time?
Yes, please. Thank you. Uh, thank you for your time. Figure it'd be best for me to lead off with a bit of a summary, since I know there's been some movement in the commission and a few members were in here last month. So you know, feel free if there's anything that was discussed or included with the package last month that you'd like to flesh out more or re-discuss, we'd be happy to do that. But, um, we started here in April. Um, you know, once again, I think the, as Jacqueline said, the, the goal for tonight's meeting is to hopefully finalize the discussion on the demolition, hopefully get some assurances from the commission so we can come back next month with a full request for approval for new construction, the demolition, all of that variances as well. Um, we started in April, you know, I'll start with the demolition. Um, after the April meeting, our firm put together a memorandum, kind of analyzing the project against the code, uh, things like that, going through the brewery district plan. We also retained architect David Recktenwald to put together this exhibit, which goes through a history of, of the original building. Um, or should I say this commercial building? The original buildings were residential structures. And then the additions in the seventies, things like that, and an analysis on uh, the building as it stands today, kind of going through piece by piece. Um, we flushed through that last month. Uh, as an addition to the packet this month, there was a discussion about trying to provide a, a silhouette, since it was kind of hard to officially determine where the original commercial building was and where the addition was, which we provided. Um, and would be happy to discuss through. As far as the, uh, project that's being proposed, obviously David will cover, uh, most of that there, but I'll say, I think a, a big discussion last month was with making this a little more interactive with Front Street and the ground floor in general, which we paid a lot of attention to by moving the amenities to the first floor, uh, having seven units now on the ground floor facing Front Street. Um, and overall, just having more access and more interaction with Front Street in general. Going to the site plan, a couple of things that have happened since our last meeting. We had our preliminary site compliance review with the city, uh, which was a good discussion. Mainly, I think the biggest takeaway from that would be access. A couple of updates on access. One, we first proposed having one access, uh, access point on Front Street and one on Red Bud Alley as shown there. The city was adamant about they would not support any access from Front Street. So, okay, regroup from there. As part of the preliminary site compliance review, one of the, uh, comments from traffic was that they would want any access point to be pushed away from Front Street closer to the rear, uh, Wall Street, I'll say the rear alley. Um, so that's what we've done in this new site plan is one access point off of Red Bud Alley closer to Wall Street, feeding directly into the, uh, parking spaces. Kind of seems to be the ideal location based on feedback. One, it seems clear from both residents and the commission that an access off of Deschler, uh, would not be ideal. Obviously, Front Street's off the table and we kind of ran through some of the elevation issues with Wall Street. and what that pertains to. So that's, that's where we're at with access. With that, we've also filed a variance application with the city. Three variances pertaining to, uh, vision clearance. There's a ground floor depth standard, which we just about meet now, but we do have the trash. Uh, room still proposed there, so it needs a variance for that. And then additionally, a, a parking setback from Deschler, which is necessitated by the layout of the, the small layout of the, of the property and how the parking spaces have been uh, laid out to get as many parking spaces as we can. You know, otherwise, I'll, I'll reiterate that this layout was based on the new zoning code as far as the urban center that has been laid out for this property. There are no, uh, variance requests as far as height or number of parking spaces or building setbacks. The idea with this district is to have mid-rise buildings to bring more residential to the area. That's the thought here. We've, we've tinkered with this site plan as much as we can to incorporate feedback. So with that, David, if you have any other architectural feedback.
I think you stole all my thunder. So, uh, but again, we, we, we did listen to the commission. We really spent a lot of time looking at how we could re, uh, develop that ground floor, again, pulling all that, um, residential amenity towards Front Street. And giving that activity, there was also the comment about trying to bring some liveliness to the front facade. So we pulled the staircases forward and added a lot of more glass to that so that there's a lot more visualization and movement there.
Like that.
But again, um, we're, our hands were tied a little bit with the, with the garage access based on the city's feedback. So we think we've hit all, all of those marks. Uh, the floor to floor had to go up a little bit just because of the grades. The more we push access towards the east, the higher that ground floor or the floor to floor for that first area has to be just to get us into that garage area.
Any further?
No.
Okay. Before the commission comments, we do have two speakers left, so I want to be able to give the two speakers a chance to each have three minutes of response time or speaker time. What I would, uh, ask you to do is when I call your name is come up, uh, and then I will swear you in real quick under an oath. Uh, you'll have to state your full name and association or your full name and address for record. Uh, and then you'll have three minutes. I'll have to time you on that. And then, uh, we can then move on to each speaker. And if the applicant wants to respond at any point, uh, after you've concluded, we'll give them that opportunity to do so. So first, um, if I could have Alyssa Evans come forward.
Hey there.
If you could raise your right hand, you swear to tell your truth and tell the truth in your testimony for the commission this evening.
Absolutely.
And if you could state your full name and then your full address for record.
My name is Alyssa Evans and my address is thirty eight West Deschler. I live directly across the street from this building.
Okay, great. You can have a seat or you can, oh, okay, you're gonna do that. I was gonna do that too, but.
Sounds great.
Okay, well, I, I can do it.
Just tell me when. All right. Like I said, my name is Alyssa and I'm a creative director at Victoria's Secret. I'm also an owner of a condo that's right across the street from this proposed development. What drew me to this particular spot was the peacefulness and the greenery of the area, historic buildings and the sun exposure and view that my condo gets. The current proposal stands to destroy all of that. I love the brewery district and I fully believe that redevelopment done well will be positive for the community. But I don't think that the developers are being respectful to our neighborhood with the current plans. My neighbors and I have sent many notes and I've listened to members of this committee voice the importance of creating a building that will integrate into the historic fabric of the neighborhood of keeping green space and of designing a parking solution that integrates well into our community. But the development plans keep ignoring these points. For example, the proposed building is six stories tall in a neighborhood of one to three story buildings. And the rendering also shows our building is four stories. It absolutely is not. It takes over the entire footprint of the land without respecting the current setback of the historic Swiss Chalet building. It's double the height. It has more than a hundred units, which will easily bring a hundred and fifty to two hundred cars into the neighborhood and it's only providing fifty one spots. The burden of this congestion is going to fall entirely onto the new and current residents while the developers just rake in money. There needs to be a better balance of parking in residence and a well-thought-out solution, maybe an underground garage. Additionally, the north side of the proposed building has no setback and not a single three tree, and it is demolishing a grassy area with mature trees in order to put in a parking garage exit. This is going to bring a dangerous amount of traffic onto a street that already has congestion issues. People speed down Deschler all the time. I've seen quite a few near incidents and there was even a recent car accident here. It's not well thought out. My neighbors and I would also have to deal with car headlights shining into our condos every time someone leaves. It's majorly going to diminish the ability to enjoy our homes. In summary, I respectfully ask the commission to preserve the historic Swiss Chalet building or at a minimum require the reduction, require a reduction in the height and mass of any new construction to something more appropriate to our historic neighborhood. Ensure that parking capacity matches the number of projected units or residents in units, like two cars for two bedroom, et cetera. Require the garage entrance be placed on the alley, not on Deschler and Rosebud. And protect the current setback, the green space and the mature trees on the north side of the property. I really think this could be an amazing addition to the community, but only if these important details are well thought out. Really appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would, uh, would the applicant like to respond to any points raised by the?
Sure. Yeah. Is there, I guess, does anybody else have a speaker?
I guess there is one additional speaker at this time. Sure, we can, you can do that. Sorry.
Time to play.
Sorry, my kid shows that.
We got five letters. The commission got five letters. Do they get read? To the record?
No, we, we haven't gotten that far.
Okay, good.
I was gonna ask Jacqueline to do that.
Perfect. Even better.
Yep. Uh, so, uh, Tamla Cole. You can raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in your testimony for the commission this evening?
Yes.
If you could state your full name and your address.
Tamla Cole, forty four West Deschler Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four three two zero six.
Great. You can start.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I have, uh, kind of gone over this over and over and over. I'm probably one of the newer uh, residents, uh, in Boroughs Gate. I moved, uh, to my current home February of this year. So, uh, I immediately fell in love in search of moving from the suburbs to urban living. Uh, I was very excited. I have always been interested and drawn to the brewery district, particularly that condominium based on the design. Uh, I am fortunate enough to be on the end unit, so I have wall to wall windows. Uh, it gets very hot, uh, but nevertheless, I'm still in love with the neighborhood, the traffic. Alyssa mentioned an accident. My sister was parked on Front Street. Someone turning on Deschler hit her. Um, so that is of concern, that size of a building. And I think for me, I am not opposed to redevelopment. I would hate to see, uh, the Swiss Chalet torn down. I am not an architect. I am not, uh, an, a structural engineer. But what I am is a social worker. I am a real estate investor, uh, and I am a homeowner. It's from that perspective. Social work. I understand the demand for housing. Columbus is growing rapidly. We have to make that a priority, uh, but not at the expense of an established historic neighborhood such as the brewery district. Uh, I think done tastefully, uh, and taking time to make sure, uh, whatever is developed fits. That community is extremely important. One bad decision can take that entire historic area down the wrong path. So I do appreciate how thorough you have been. I'm late to the game, but I did listen to the May meeting. From a real estate investor, I recognize the numbers need to make sense. I recognize the value of that location. But again, there are individuals who have formed and developed relationships, established homes in that area, so they too matter. Uh, and then lastly, looking at it from a standpoint of a homeowner, I am concerned as to that volume. The only thing I can think of when I look at that rendering is monstrosity. That is a humongous building that overshadows the other structures. Uh, so I would ask that the commission definitely continue to give a thorough review, uh, because that is going to be imperative to, again, what happens moving forward. So again, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Thanks. And additionally, we did receive a number of letters. I would love for Jacqueline to read them into record. And that may also be something you may want to respond to any concerns raised in those letters if you, or if you want to address these two. Um, now it's up to you.
Say, go ahead.
Okay, you can read it.
Okay, um, so the letters, I don't have physical copies. We could bring them up on the computer here. I do know that one of the public speakers today had submitted at least one of the letters. I don't know if the commission would want that letter still read out or not, or if we, um, or if it consider it to be similar enough.
I have read all the letters that we've received by email. I don't know. So everybody's aware at least of the content of the letters. And has the applicant received copies of all those letters?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So they're already in the permanent record?
Yes. So then I'm.
I think.
Because everybody's acknowledged they've.
Um, if there's something, you know, we need to bring up, we can bring up a letter on the screen.
Okay, then I would ask you to.
Come on up.
So I guess to address this kind of piece by piece, one, I think access, uh, we've worked diligently with commission and the city as far as trying to identify the best location and the less, least interfering, uh, location. And I think we've found a good spot as far as just on the south, no access off of Deschler, which will reduce traffic up there, which will reduce headlights and things like that. So I think we've worked through that matter. Um, landscaping, I.
Just, just to be clear, so there won't be any big openings or anything on the Deschler facing side where headlights would be seen anymore?
There will be large openings, but there will be above the, the height of headlights of cars.
Okay.
There'll be half some, the garage is going to be semi-submerged in the ground.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but so what's on the north side then? What are the openings for?
Uh, air circulation to the garage.
All right.
And there is residential property on the south side as well?
Yes.
Red Bud.
Mm-hmm. As far as landscaping goes, I think you can see in the plan that's proposed, there will be, you know, elements of landscaping, trying to incorporate as much as we can, both at ground level and I think even higher levels above. Um, this is an urban infill development. You know, I think a lot of the comments regarding parking, building setback, things like that. I'll reiterate, those are all permitted by right under this new zoning code. This is an urban infill development on a property in a city that is craving density. You know, it's a small footprint. We're doing what we can as far as fitting in ground floor, active space, something that fits in with the development. Something that fits the residential character. And something that meets all of the standards. So I would, I would reiterate that. I think one interesting point too is prior to the rezoning of this property, this was the same zoning from the original Columbus zoning code from nineteen twenty eight, which was a manufacturing and H sixty district. So, you know, one, this is a less intense use than what has been there for almost a hundred years or what was permitted. And two, it's not as though we are going from a single-family H thirty-five district. This was permitted with a higher height. It is once again permitted. It is once again in urban development. So I don't think it's necessarily a huge surprise as far as this type of development at this type of height and this type of density. So with that, I think that's all I have.
Okay, great. I will open it up for questions, uh, from the commission. One question, so I know you've had your preliminary site compliance, it sounds like. Are you going to have additional right-of-way improvements, say along West Deschler or along that north side of the building that may require you to do street scape improvements, sidewalks? Anything where you may have to even pull the building back a little bit yet?
Nothing as far as pulling the building back as far as I'm aware. I know there were.
Is this like a zero lot line condition? Because this is not, obviously this is a hand drawn, not a technical.
It is.
Survey.
Yeah, if we, and there is a site plan as well that was included that could show that. But yeah, it's a zero foot setback.
Except on the east facade, it's pulled back. From the, uh, property line there, there are utility lines along that street. They're going to be contending them.
Uh, which, wait, the utility lines are, are along.
Is it on the east?
East.
Wall Street side?
Sorry, on Wall, south wall.
Does that flip through? It looked like maybe there's still some different iterations that are being studied. I know we're still at conceptual, but a couple of different floor plan options. Is that still, are things still fluid?
Beyond this floor plan, what you're seeing, that's the old one, that should not be included. So the, that is the current.
That's the current one right there.
And.
Okay.
You said you are going to have some forthcoming variances that companion to this. And it'll would like, you know, is, is ground floor units allowed now under the new code?
Yes.
Okay.
We have three, three variances, I believe. And you're still waiting on the trash sort of situation? See how that's going to flow and the access point there?
Um, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's been approved as far as the location of that.
The city's.
Yes.
I, I do appreciate that, uh, some of the feedback, I think that we gave previously about the experience at the pedestrian level. I do see that you guys are making some efforts to uh, consider activating that ground level, um, and, you know, being cognizant of what it's like to be, uh, walking around in that neighborhood. So the landscaping, the units on the ground, engagement with the lobbies and the stairs, um, I think those are all positive improvements.
I think it'd be, you know, that for me, a lot of the building has kind of come together a lot more. Um, I actually appreciate ground floor units. I think they help balance out the bigger building in a district like this that has housing units nearby, um, that are also ground floor. Right now, I, and also by the way, thank you for adding entrances on that front face. I think that's a, that's just a practicality thing that will help the building operate. Is there some large, like almost curtain wall, like windows on the front of those ground floor units? Just think about that experience of what that is long-term and just in the next iteration, right? Cause we're conceptual, but as you develop your, your next set of drawings, it's just, what's that like for a tenant in those, living in one of those units? You know, cause usually when there's a tenant with big glass windows and ground floors, that means there's going to be curtains and drapes and they're going to be closed a lot. So just, you know, just think about that.
Um, is there ground floor? I, I guess my understanding was there wasn't going to be, um, ground floor tenants is, are there going to be ground floor tenants? Would you be able to clarify?
Yeah.
Yeah, walk ups.
Okay. I guess I just saw a variance and maybe that was different.
They're single story, right? This was me, six hundred square foot is what it looked like.
Yeah, yep, that, that depiction shows it well.
Right. And I, I think those are great things when you can kind of have little kind of quasi brownstone kind of entry right off the street that's.
These guys are right above them.
But thank you for addressing, I think, street front. Um, I also think it's important, you know, like there are certain things we cannot weigh in on this commission. We're not development commission, we're not some other roles here in the city. So we review commission specific submissions based on HRC guidelines, but I think the impact of headlights and the impact of some of these concerns are a lot more resolved by limiting access to Red Bud Alley. So in my mind, it's a, you've come up with a, some of the better solution and thank you to responding that. I think long-term, I would love to see what you do do for landscaping along West Deschler Avenue. And what that facade looks like and what, you know, other people, you know, with, with that not having access on it anymore, it'd be great to see what, what you do with that facade. You know, what you do with that ground floor treatment, just so it has a, a pedestrian experience as well and a visual thing. And whether that's landscaping, treatment of brick, an opportunity for, heck, this is a great opportunity for actually doing murals or other things, you know, long-term, just something that, that could address up that Deschler experience a little bit would be really great. But that's, that's all my thoughts, right?
Can we go to the rendering page of, um, shows the early evening of Front Street elevation. shows the early evening of front street elevation. So the proposed drive, this is Redbud, I'm assuming the way between that.
Yeah.
So is that a gate, like a garage sort of roll up gate is what we're seeing there?
Correct.
Yep.
So you even have some landscape that's going to be there as well, which I don't see.
Yes.
It's good.
I think the rendering is a little bit tough to see, but the floor, if you look at the, uh, the site plan, you can see the amount of landscape that we will have on that side, at least the green space. We haven't shown any planting there as yet, but, um, it looks like we've got, we're probably going to get around eight to 10 feet of landscaping along that edge.
It just looked good that you had at least something there that just wasn't going to be.
We will have something.
Grass or something, so. Okay.
And we haven't got into the nuances of what the city could require regarding Redbud Alley. Right now, it's pretty rough. So, I mean, we've still got to work through back and forth, but how, how wide that street's going to be and whatever width that street's going to be is going to kind of indicate. Landscape we're going to bring on there.
How much base do you have there again, about two feet, three, two and a half feet?
I'm thinking it's like eight feet of landscape.
Oh, currently and that.
Well, should.
I meant.
Going east west or north south? East west, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
How about north, south? Like how wide is that? No, no, I'm saying like, so other words, I see what.
Deeper the beds.
Correct. So the words, if you have to shrink that.
I, I thought you meant eight feet along the length of the wall. That was what I was asking, when I said east west and north.
Uh, no, uh, it's where the length of the, I, let me look at my plan here.
How deep are the beds though, from your standpoint?
The beds are going to be about eight feet deep. If you look at a typical parking space.
Yeah.
Which is.
Oh, yeah.
That's about that width. So.
That makes sense. The drawing doesn't reflect that.
Yeah, the rendering a little.
Yeah.
But this, this, I do get, okay.
So probably along that facade, we probably about sixty feet of green space, I would say.
One of the letters was from, uh, the tenant on the south side. I mean, the owners on the south side, their sense of the proportions were very different from what you're describing. Do we, do we have that to quote from? That was one of the early letters we got, I think.
Was that the original version maybe?
I think so.
Which proportions was it?
Which proportions are you referring to?
The size of, from sort of their door to the, to the building.
Understood.
Yeah, they were really troubled by.
Okay.
Yeah, again, we're, we're right on our property line, the building itself.
Yeah.
Um, and again, there's quite a bit of difference if distance between our property line and you can actually see the dark line to the right.
Yeah.
Is, is the other building.
I just want to make sure we understand what that person has said and make sure that we're clean on what is true.
Yeah, it looks like there's approximately, if I had a guess, tw- forty feet between our building and theirs.
That would be much better than what they're fearing.
Including their setback and all that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. For my, for my standpoint, when I think about the densing and the massing of this building, the case for this property to me is a little different just because of the height district for so long was sixty feet. And by right, you know, all the things that could have been built up in some more recent times of the sixty foot height that were allowed.
You cover a lot from the signature, sorry.
So.
So it was sixty, Commissioner? And then, and now it's, that's been lifted, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, I.
Seventy, seventy-five now.
We're, we're, yeah, we're, they're capping out, I think, at a proposal of seventy-one.
So they're a few feet on.
A little bit, it's seventy, we're about seventy-four feet to the top of the parapet, uh, right now, again.
I, as you know, I have a different perspective on what you guys are proposing. And I just want to read a few things that are in our, our legal mandate, as I understand it. It's the conclusion of the HBO staff, the city attorney's office and the department of development that the historic resources commission retains full authority to review all exterior alterations and new construction in the Bury district as outlined in city code and the Columbus register of historic properties and Bury district guidelines. In recognition of historic preservation and design review being a key aspect of development, the zoning title thirty-four update includes chapter A regarding the applicability of title thirty-one planning and historic preservation code. The title thirty-four zoning update does not affect protections in place for historic districts and individually listed properties. So to, and there's more, which will be, if you haven't received a staff report, will be in the staff report. In my mind, that means that the district, um, criteria, what's appropriate for the district overrides the zoning, the new zoning stuff. And I, I behave because I think that's legally true. So I behave in the way I do because I think that's legally true. To me, therefore, the, the neighborhood comments that have talked about the scale and massing of the building as being too large for the district, that have talked about the park, parking issues as being significant problem for the district and for the owners and, and renters who live very close to that place. And the access stuff are all viable and appropriate comments that we should be paying attention to. I would not, I'm not supportive of the building for that reason. So I believe in the, the new code. I think it's entirely appropriate. I just think that this is not the best application of it. And I know you guys have worked hard, so I apologize, but that's kind of the perception that I have coming into it as a member of this commission.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your feedback. I, you know, only point I would disagree on, I would say is, is parking really? I mean, I would say that's outside the purview. There's no variance. It's not a design criteria or anything like that.
It's a lot of people to put into the very small space.
Which we're allowed to do.
And I also want to make sure we pay attention to the rights of the people on the south side and think of them the same way as the people who came tonight to speak about Deschler. I think we've solved the Deschler problem substantially, right? I don't think we've done that for the other side. Have, did you guys look at the, at the alley in the back as a possibility for parking entry?
I think the big issue, I mean, Dave, you can go into more elevation was a big concern as far as.
I just, I, I think the people who live on the south side are, need equal protection from the challenges of trying to put something significantly larger than the standard in that space.
Remind us the, um, on the east side, I think last time we talked, you had mentioned that that garage is actually going to be act as a retaining wall of sorts.
Correct.
Because it's the, the elevation change. Can you remind me, what's the delta in the elevation?
So between front street and the Wall Street's about five and a half feet of height difference. So if you, right now, you, if you think we're going to be at grade, uh, with those units in the lobby, we're going to be about, we're going to be shoving that garage up a bit just so we can get the access into it. But I'm thinking we're going to be about two and a half to three feet into the ground.
You can see there's some numbers on this.
Yes, I got great points rendering in there.
I mean, I'm, I know we're still early. It's just not making sense to me yet because if you're entering that far east off of Redbud, I don't, I don't understand how the delta from that access point to the alley could be that many feet, right? So I, I, I think a section or something like that would be helpful.
Yeah. In the next iteration, we'll definitely have sections through the building, you know.
Yeah.
Both directions so that you can see some of those heights and how that all.
It just, the math doesn't make sense in my head, at least of how you go from that entry just up twenty some feet, maybe thirty feet, and you've, you've covered that many feet different in elevation. So I, I'd like to verify what you guys are stating in terms of like the, hey, this is a non-starter. It's not even possible. Uh, it would be helpful just to, to see that piece of it.
Okay, sure.
I should add one thing. I'm very open to trying to figure out something that would be a compromised solution that would not be quite so large, quite so tall. That would be more in keeping with the neighborhood. And I think the neighborhood would re, react in a very positive way to that.
So for a couple, sorry.
We need to go back to the discussion of the actual structure that's there is that, that was part of me focused tonight. To look at the actual viability of if it makes sense to demolish. I'm sorry, go ahead, were you?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna, um, I mean, I think that's a good point, um, just maybe have a gut check. Um, so the applicant knows or has a good idea as they move forward. And then if we could, um, I've heard a little bit about the massing and scale, but just getting a little bit more from the commission on their feel. Um, I know the code talks about compatibility between the old and the new with adjacent structures, set off, scale, size, mass, looking at each facade, just what the, how the commission is seeing this of, of meeting that. And there's any feedback there or not for the applicants. So as they go on to refine, they have that.
So would it be best to procedurally, should we each kind of go down the line and offer our feedback formally on scale, massing, supportive demolition?
Yeah, if we feel comfortable with that, I think it'll be helpful.
We, I always say that in the affirmative, by the way, people may take, make, make an opposite approach.
Sure.
We've always avoided kind of straw poles.
The applicant does have the right to request that, though.
They do?
Even during conceptual, huh?
They have the right to ask how you're going to feel.
Work or not. Well, they have, they have.
Yeah, I mean.
They have the ability to ask how we feel about it though, right?
It's a matter, the project's dead if demolition isn't approved. So it's really a matter of, we want to come back for a vote and we'd like, it'd be a waste of everybody's time if.
Correct, they can ask us how we feel.
Well, I think they make their cues from what we provide. We don't necessarily have to say, you know, you.
You can, you can express your, your, your support or not.
Or you can refrain from providing.
That too, if you feel more comfortable.
You don't have to provide any comment if you don't. For sure.
Or if there's, if there's something you haven't seen, um, that you'd like to see in the future.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I have no problems, you know, opening up the conversation on it.
Whoever wants to participate, I guess.
Yeah, and, and that, that can be perfectly fine too. And you can just say, hey, I don't, I don't wish to waste my concern at this time. That, that's perfectly, we, nobody's, nothing's held against anybody. I do think the design has come a long way. I do think there have been adjustments and changes to the project that have been beneficial. I think I will be interested in seeing its next iteration, how the details themselves come together, how the, the brick looks, the window volumes, the, the kind of the fine detailing comes out of this project. Because I think that's, that kind of the table is set for a really good meal, if you will. And I think this can go to the next level. I really want to see a lot of compelling stuff on the Deschler elevation and how it looks at the ground level specifically, just as much as I really was very concerned last meeting about how the pedestrian experience felt on the front street. I think that's, it's critical to know what you see as a person and as a car driving by. I think the upper floors have come a long way. In my mind, you know, a lot of that has come together from the standpoint of, uh, amassing in a building as a whole. I, I don't, I don't object to this density. There are other buildings not that far from here that are, that are similar situations. Um, and in my mind, you know, this is what's also making these districts sort of still viable. So I, I'm okay with what is, you know, the current massing and height. I suspect as the applicant goes through further through site plan review, gets logistics of utilities, alleyway improvements, drawer, e, sidewalk, you know, other things, I think they're going to organically, things will shrink this building down in other directions because of site challenges you're going to have. I, I just, you know, doing development myself, being in, in the city, doing work in the city, no project has ended how I started proposing it. So I think there's going to be other forces on this building beyond our commission that are going to do some things essentially. I would say in the case of the Swiss building itself, I probably came into this conversation on the initial application thinking, boy, it'd be great to save a building. I'm not convinced there's much here to be saved at this time. The exterior is a lot of current replacement of stuff of not the same quality. It, it mimics the motifs, but it's just not there anymore. It's new stock, new wood trims. The original building is so hodgepodge. I know we don't weigh in on the interior, but the, even in the interior has been a really kind of a, an obliterated mess. To me, a lot of the character is not there anymore for me. And I think it's a, it's a great building to document its history. I, I hope maybe they can tell the story of the building, the Swiss. I mean, again, I, I always look at ways to reinterpret history. Maybe there's a mural on the first floor and the outside of the Deschler face that recognizes some of this incorporated into it. You know, I've worked with other buildings and other projects in other cities where historical imagery and stuff became parts of storytelling on the building itself. And maybe there's a cool way to do that, I don't know. You know, that's, again, we're not the architects or the designers here, so I want to pose that back. But I look forward to seeing, maybe there's a way they can tell some of the story, but I'm not convinced the integrity of the building is much left beyond the story. It's a good story, but now it's just a story. It's no longer a building for me. But that's just me personally. I'll open it up to anybody else.
Um, I think the, uh, changes with, with the, uh, front of the building, the, the pedestrian experience, moving the apartments forward. Uh, really good move. Everybody talks about massing a lot. I've, I've been looking at the building. I, I've been a little wondering why all the illustrations are an early evening or night instead of like morning or broad daylight. And, uh, and I don't know if it's a massing issue or if the building just looks unfriendly. And I don't know, it's because it's dark and ominous looking, uh, that it, that it just doesn't feel right for the neighborhood that's kind of open and friendly and, and smaller scale. It, it, it's almost like a building that's trying to be big or bigger than it is. And I think that may be part of the opposition. May, maybe if it had balconies or the people more interactive on it, which I think is what people were getting at when they wanted more pedestrian stuff on the ground floor, that's kind of happening. This looks real residential then. It, it has a, a strong institutional, hard look to it for that neighborhood. And those things are probably just my feelings and not something that's really drawn from the code. And ultimately I'll have to look at what the code says and does it pass it or not? The height, uh, that's what the code is, that's what is permitted. I'm never one to believe in making standards higher than what they exist. At the same time, we do have obligations to accommodate neighbors and to make sure that it's contextual with, with the neighboring houses on it. As far as the Swiss delay goes, um, I suspect it would never be reopened again and it would sit there forever. And so I, I guess I'm dealing with, how are we going to rationalize that? And how are we going to? If we, uh, allow it to be demoed, does that occur without setting a precedent that just simply says unwanted buildings can be demoed? There may be, there may be a case, I'm hoping that there will be a, a good case that can be made for that. And we can all be convinced of that. So I'm certainly open to that.
Yes, two items on that one. Uh, there are, there are some balconies proposed. I don't know if you can see them in the, in the interior. I guess, I don't know, David, if you're thinking, is there anything specific, I guess, that can be done?
No, no, I, I, I just, I just, like, like I said, it's not anything specific that's in violation of any of the guidelines or whatever. It just looks so uninviting. And so I don't think I'd want to live next to part of that building. I wouldn't want to live in it either. And it, i- i- if, if you could look at it to give it more of a friendly neighborhood. I mean, there are big neighborhood buildings all over the country, uh, that, that, that people love and that they flock to. This just seems so kind of dark. And maybe it's only because all the renderings seem to be at night. But this is my general feeling, but again, I can't relate those particular code issues or issues of our, which I will ultimately go with because what the code says, the code says. And so as you can build that tall, you can build that tall. So, uh, that's where I am.
And then real quick, second point, just, I think my memo addresses the second part about the demolition. I, I don't think it sets a precedent for few reasons. One, looking at the design guidelines for this particular area, which kind of emphasized on not liking the, the replacement of residential buildings with commercial buildings with surface parking lots, the goals for this area as far as brick, Italianite, things like that. And then going through just some of the, uh, changes that have been made to the original building. And then how the new construction, I would say, is more in line with the expectations for the area. So I, I think. I think if you look through that, I, I do think that, I don't think this would set any precedent, is what I'm saying, the demolition of it.
Yeah, we, we could, we might be able to work it.
Um, Clyde, for code, I'm just looking through if there's anything specific to height. Um, there's one that jumps out because the first word happens to be height. Um, it just, you know, it doesn't have specific, um, numbers or anything, uh, because that's just, you know, that's how the district code works. The, the code says, "Height as viewed from the street shall be compatible with adjacent contributing properties. Set offs may be used at upper levels. Physical size and scale shall be compatible to existing contributing properties without overwhelming them." So that's what just the code says about height.
And that's really the Bury District section.
Uh, no, it's a city code for all of the
Historic Districts, right?
All right.
So, 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 so we need to look at in relationship to the surrounding building?
Well, adjacent
Adjacent.
Contributing structures.
This is historical district, so are they not all?
They're all. Um, they are all part of the district, but not all structures are contributing.
Right. But when you look at, so back this all the way out, when you look at the height differential is really pretty clearly indicated here between the clearly contributing buildings to the south of it, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we can't see the, the north, but we know the north is three stories high, I think, not four.
Is, is the north a contributing structure?
It's a contemporary.
Yeah.
So I would say no, because it doesn't meet the age criteria, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Pardon me.
And, and truly still, though, it's a personal opinion on impact, right? It's a subjectivity.
Most of what we do is?
Yeah. Can you, yeah, um, back up the final decision with code? Yeah.
I share similar views to many of the comments that have been made, primarily the comments that, um, Chair McCabe has introduced. I think that, um, in my support of the new structure clearly provides information about the current structure that has very little historic fabric left. And I appreciate, first and foremost, that you have been very attentive to address items we've had in a very quick way and looking at a lot of possibilities. So I think that will continue, and I hope that that dialogue will keep moving, and that's what sort of is giving me encouragement to think that this project could be on a correct path. Um, I am, uh, I share a little bit of Mr. Henry's perspective on some of the aesthetic appeal, but that's something that's very easily addressed. Some of the changes, some of the color, some of the identities of the way the building structure appeals as a, as a whole. I do not have a problem with the massing. I think that even though you have originally came up with something that was entirely different, it's changed into a warmer building, but yet it's still got some, some movement to happen, and I understand the objectives of the, the design and what needs to happen there as well. Um, part of the demolition, three-one-one-six-point-one-four for standards of demolition, which you're well aware of, that plan really needs to consist of, you know, the timeline, a very definite plan of what you plan to put back in place, uh, financial responsibility documentation, and a completion and an evaluation of the community. So I think all that needs to happen before we say, yes, we're gonna allow for the rest of this to go through, which I think you're on the right but I am in support of what's coming, and, um, I look forward to seeing some of the newer changes.
Thank you.
Uh, so on the Swiss chalet, um, also agree that, uh, from what's left there, it's sort of just a I, I feel it's more of a remnant, um, and it's more applique, and it's gone through iterations that have not been kind to it. Um, and so I, I'm also for this space being used in, um, revitalizing or continuing to contribute to the, the community, and I don't, I don't see the Swiss chalet contributing, uh, much more than just sort of the historical. Um, I, I think you put it well, the story of it, um, the, the actual structure itself, I, I think there's not much left. Um, and I also echo, I appreciate, uh, a lot of the requests that we've made, uh, through the past meetings. I see that you guys are being attentive and listening. Um, and I, I think there's a lot of improvements. If we could go back to the rendering, um, the, the one thing that, um, just in terms of massing and the harshness, I, I do think like what's happening on the front, uh, because of the way the U and the courtyard, the elevated courtyard, um, and the way the street is activated, the landscaping, all that stuff is allowing that facade to break down in scale and read differently and be more accessible. When you look at the south facade, and I'm assuming the north, although I don't know if we've seen it, I'm assuming the north's very similar to the south. Um, really, that's reading as blank facade, uh, very tall, uh, compared to the neighbors. So when I think of the context, um, the way that you've approached this west facade very different. And I, and I understand it's partly because of the U shape and, and how you're approaching the site, but I do encourage the team to look at ways to potentially break that down in the massing. We're hearing a lot of comments from neighbors in terms of the relationship to the adjacent buildings. And I think, um, although I understand, you know, from the zoning standpoint and the heights, um, but we do still have a mandate in terms of the historical code to talk about context, and I would just encourage you all to look at that and listen to these, these folks that are speaking about their needs and what it's, how it's gonna affect them. Listen to these letters and just think about how the context can play into the way you're thinking of that massing. Um, and, um, I, and I do think there's a lot of really good stuff going on. Um, but I don't know if that good stuff's happening on any of the other facades other than the west facade at this time.
I think that was a great and insightful comment. I think that would really help. I think you guys know where I am. Um, I feel like I've been pretty clear. Uh, I recognize that on a demolition point, a couple of points, I don't think that we've ever seriously considered reusing that document, that building. It is the case for buildings of that period that often they were pastiche, they were just applied elements, and that's as valid, to me, an historic context as any. Um, and I think you've also heard me say the Bury District is known for being quirky. The commission that was focused on the Bury District only was really aware of that, really celebrated it. Um, so my objection is that I didn't, I don't know that we've ever really seriously considered an alternative with that. Um, having said that, you know, I also can read the tea leaves on this one. It seems unlikely that, that, um, they're gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of support for that perspective. So, um, yeah, the rest of the stuff I think I've said. And massing maybe is not the right, I like the idea of it dealing forbidding. I think that's real and less friendly. I love the idea of the north and south facades really needing work. We did that, um, in the Bury District Commission for the building that's going into the warehouse. What's the name of the warehouse?
Um, Jones Hill?
Jones Hill Building. We really spent a lot of time and energy looking at the different facades and the neighbors' perspective, and we're able to substantially soften, to use, I think, your words, um, those facades in a way that really helped those neighbors feel a lot more uh, cared about and feel a lot more so it would not, um, have a negative impact on them, their lives and their properties. Beyond that, I will just say you heard what I had to say earlier. I haven't changed my opinion.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, then I have, uh, just a staff suggestion. I know, um, that there's another property, it reminds me of this, um, just not that the design is similar, but um, it's in German Village, you know, Pendino, East Livingston, going under through the approval process. Um, and just the similarities are, you know, not the same exact height, but that is taller than, um, we typically, you know, see in German Village and its new construction, and it's, um, would be demoing a, like a nineteen-eighties building that I know the German Village Commission is um, okay and supportive of, and then they've done some, um, redesign, listened to the German Village Commission feedback, but still maintain height in certain places. Uh, it's not gonna be an apples-to-apples kind of thing, but just, um, them taking cues and then really working it into, I think they have a particularly challenging site there. Um, so that might be, you know, something just to think about and might help, um, take, you know, looking at that, how that took cues and this site, this, you know, different site, different context, but you know, could be helpful just to look and compare.
I'm doing that one, too, so, well aware. Thank you.
That's good.
Yeah, I guess it, thank you. Thanks for your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacqueline, are there any items for new business or old business?
No items for, or no items for new business or old business.
Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention. Motion passes, adjourned at seven twenty-four PM. Thank you.